Jason.
Well, what resolutions? What resolutions?
Hello Chuck.
Somebody's system.
Nice driveway over there buddy.
Oh isn't it lovely?
Well at least they got the five. That's not it? Thank you Brian. Really? I was just trying to figure out what we were going to do. It's your show.
Oh no.
It's your show. I think it's great I did. I appreciate what you're doing. Okay everybody it's seven o'clock and uh Jason have you uh we on we doing a streaming live now? Welcome everybody out there in the other world. I'd like to uh call a meeting to order of the supervisors. It's our Tuesday October 16th meeting and I appreciate for those that haven't upris risen to stand up and I would ask our guest tonight uh Brian Puschall to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody would remain standing moment of silence for the brave men and women that protect us local and internationally in the armed forces EMS fire anybody in the emergency services. We ask for um taking care of the families that have lost loved ones protecting us and along with the people that we've lost with problems with the local hurricanes and stuff we offer a thought for them. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate everybody coming tonight though that last meeting we had uh
One person.
One person here and uh that's the same person that's here that's everybody and he sits down in the front row. But we do have Julia Loving here from Carol and Comit is office and that means there's a lot of love in the area. Is that not true? Uh okay we'll move everybody along I gotta I want to announce that we are live streaming so it's a one way for those that don't know what we're doing it's it's only out there's still a way of coming back in on the on the live streaming. Uh if anybody's interested in seeing what that looks like you can go on YouTube anytime and you can pull up this particular meeting or any other meeting you don't have to be listening to it to it live here today this evening. Uh as far as the chairman's report is concerned there's a couple of things I need to talk about. One is that we met in an executive session regarding a police labor matter prior to tonight's meeting. I assume everybody most everybody knows that we're negotiating or attempting to negotiate the contract with the police department. Our current contract ends at the end of the year and uh that is a definite work in progress to say the least. Um I'd also need to announce that uh there will be a special meeting on October 25th at 7:00 PM regarding recommendations centering around the developing regulations for additional housing types on properties of 20 acres or more. We have had uh one homeowner approach us to see if in fact there is something that can be done that's consistent with what we normally do that would be helpful to these large properties. Most of which have some constraints or environmental constraints where even though they're entitled to one unit per acre uh they necess they don't necessarily get there without stripping down virtually everything that you want to protect. So this is in one means of doing that it does not increase the density uh but we've sent letters out to a thousand feet to the to the residents that are near the four properties and if you want to come you're welcome to come. We have gotten feedback emails from some residents relative to that that they don't fully understand what we're trying to do. This meeting is to educate everybody including the board members. The planning commission and consultants have been involved in this uh the board up until this point in time has not. Janet and I have attended a couple of the meetings but it's been well all the meetings basically to try to keep with what's going on. But it's in the purview of the planning commission and they will be here along with Tom Comit of our consultant. Um so you're welcome to join us. We do have a special celebration tonight uh as I mentioned to the individual that led us in the pledge of allegiance. Commander Brian is it Puschall Ursol Close?
Close.
Close. Um is here tonight to present us a flag he's a commander. Um I'm not sure a hundred percent of his background. Jason I know was kind enough to send us some information and I probably I probably somehow it's in cyberspace somewhere. So I'm not quite sure where it is but somebody that's out there in cyberspace knows exactly what commander's background is. So I'd appreciate if you'd come up I think the best thing to do because you might want to make a couple of comments about your your background and so forth and and why we're getting the flag that you're about to present us. If you go over there and make sure that the mic is on those that are out in the streaming world can hear you. If if we don't do that don't turn these microphones on they can't hear us or can have a difficult sight. So our our turner runner is over there to make sure that you're in this.
Um so my background Brian Puschall I've been in the Navy and Navy Reserve for 24 years. Uh commissioned in 1994 spent seven years on active duty um to the submarine officer and then transitioned to the reserve side. And I spent um almost entire last year uh from June of 17th to July of 18th in Africa for deployed as a mobilized reservist. Um you know so while there it's obviously very different experience than as anyone who's ever deployed whether it's for a few months or years one time or many you know it you know you it's very different and you get support from a lot of different areas. Um there's lots of care packages coming in they're great um they're wonderful and we need them forward. Uh there's also little pieces of support you don't realize and uh one thing for us personally which is big is Halloween. Uh my son is an avid Halloween decorator if you drive by our house right now he's already got some out. Um but he entered our house last year the Halloween decorating competition which is great pause that for a second. Uh Jason was kind enough to let me enter my containerized living unit like clue in Africa and it was it was a feeble attempt but it was nice to see it online in the competition. Uh what was neat about yeah I think I got nine votes and they were all duplicates. What was nice about it though was um you got participation around the world. So I went out and I talked to my friends over there and I got them to vote and I got folks from various African countries that I worked with to vote and European countries to vote and spread and it was just kind of neat that you know for those of us forward you know East Ocean Township was still decorating contest for about a week was sort of the the fulcrum of thought. So just for y'all just a small piece of of support so um while over there you know there's a tradition in the service to fly flags in honor of people organizations so I had this flag flown not just in one place but three I'll get that in a second. So I'd like to present it and I'll lecture to who?
Thank you.
Chairman Shane.
Our chairman.
So this flag you know we'll get to the certificates here. So three places uh the first is to certify um it was flown on the Colts River Range um boat small patrol craft that we have there's a squadron and in Djibouti it's a it's a pretty busy port and they provide security protection for vessels coming in and out. So it was flown on one of those patrol craft that's the first one and protection of the USMS Pico which is an coiler. The second one it was flown was placed in a drone an unmanned aerial vehicle and floated a mission somewhere over Africa. Specifically I won't read the certificate it was flown aboard Reaper 12 pack 4204.
I think that's for my family.
And lastly um it flew over Camp Lemengie which is our only it's our largest permanent fort establishment in Africa. There's about 4,000 sailors soldiers airmen marines there on the east coast of Africa right above Djibouti or I'm sorry right above Somalia the country of Djibouti so that flag is flown in three spots and we wanted to bring it back and give it to township present it to the township.
Let me say I thank you for the township but also we will put this in a prominent place we will mount this and so forth and so on. When you have three uh three of these citations it's we have now beaten any place that any gentleman has sent out citations to the people because he's in the paper every day for giving a citation to someone. We have now taken the lead from Senator Dinnan. So I want to thank you for that and I certainly want to thank you for the W service every year. And notice that she only dresses in when there's someone important here otherwise she comes with her gun and everything else. So it's a beautiful thing to like to see that recognition. Jason you have enough pictures?
Not can I get one more with the handshake?
Oh sure. Here we go. You like it?
Very nice.
Thank you appreciate it thank you.
And um I love to say but uh my daughter's at dance my son's out there guys practicing and my third I got a coach.
Don't feel bad equals see the crowd. It's been one nobody one left well that's because everybody can watch us.
I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Hey Jason don't go way too fast. As a matter of fact I would like you right over there because I'll tell you something we are super fortunate to have Jason as our parking rec director for a number of different reasons not the least of which he's a prolific effective grant writer. And as a consequence of that he has made it very easy for our elected officials Carolyn the senator Killian to help us get grants for some of our projects and while Jason is there since I got the paperwork well he probably has it. Now why don't you why don't you tell the people the grants that we just received this week with the help of our legislators Carolyn Comit and Senator Killian and you deserve to take full credit for this in terms of your efforts now. A smart fellow does a smart thing and a smart thing is to make yourself known where the money comes from which is Harrisburg or in some cases perhaps the federal government Washington. Jason has become a national and state recognized person in the area of parks and recreation to the point where he's even chairman or vice chairman of some of the committees that exist in those in those states is that not correct? However that's not what's important now what's important is what you're about to announce. So if you remember the dollars that flowed in I I turn the program over to you to tell everybody how fortunate we have been and how appreciative we are of Carolyn Comit and Senator Killian with respect to helping us get those awards.
Well I do thank I do thank you for the kudos however the all the grant applications are team efforts. Um you know I kind of think of myself as the painter of the grant application but you have to have high quality paint and nice paint brushes and you have to be inspired by something and we have really great projects to work off of. We have township supervisors and staff that are committed and we have our federal and our state officials who believe in East Ocean projects and fight for us in Harrisburg because I do write a very wonderful grant application. But at the end of the day I'm not in the room helping to make the decisions and those folks are. So we do truly value what Senator Killian and Representative Comit have done for us. Um Chairman Shane speaking of our we were we found out we had two new grants this past week. We got uh 380,000 for the Hershey Mill Dam Park project um and then we got another 350.
310.
No 350 for the Mariner two pipe the the 12 million dollars that's no going to cough up to the state we got 350K through there. Um so in total over the last three or four years we're up to like 5.2 million. The Mariner two.
Was for what project?
The the 350 through the Mariner two the application was joint through Milltown and through Hershey Mill. Um so we've done we've done extremely well like for the last four years we're at like 5.2 million 5.3 million in grants which for a community that has a annual gross operating budget of 10 million is like stupendously ridiculously awesome. So I appreciate the kudos but it truly is a team effort and it's an exciting time to be here in East Ocean. We have a lot of wonderful development going on cool parks cool projects so I just like being a part of it.
I have to say for the people that aren't keeping track of this mathematically in the in the grants that we have received so far for the Hershey Mill Dam there was a 250,000 dollar grant earlier on top of this 300 and 350,000. Well anyway the number turns out to be there's 680 630,000 dollars in grant money that we've had for Hershey Mill Dam not counting the the 350,000 dollars that Jason turned him out which means that with a probably a small amount of that going to the Hershey Mill Dam the rest of it can go down to the Milltown Dam which we've got a significant amount of money for down there thanks to the grant writing and it'll it'll enable us probably to be able to do the work in the Hershey Mill Dam we're very close to what the cost of the project is going to be and will be probably within a half a million dollars of the Milltown Dam meaning we have about 800,000 dollars in grants for down there depending upon how much comes from this 350,000 dollars. So I want to thank you Jason for your work I know it's a team effort uh there's always a leader there's always somebody out front and you happen to be the person and he has gone about it the way you should go about it and I can tell you for a fact because we've met some of the people from Harrisburg that have come down here to participate in some of our grant openings like the park and so forth and so on they have a great deal of respect for Jason and his ability to enable them to do to to make us out front in some of this stuff and it has worked and it will continue to work and I want to thank you and you can thank your other friends who helped you do this probably John and Rick and Mark Warden. So it's really wonderful when you get this kind of grant money and you're able to add that to the borrowing that we did a couple of years ago it makes life a lot easier than if you have to go for the home go for yourself so we appreciate that very much. And Jason was also responsible for getting the commander here tonight and I want to thank you for that. That's that's an award that I've never seen in all the years that I've been here and we will I was talking to Ricky about that it'll be boxed and put in a prominent place.
Uh Marty Marty one one point of clarification again and thank you Jason. Um the Sunoco money that came from the 12.6 million dollar fine penalty that Sunoco was fined for their noncompliance with the Department of Environmental Protection. I don't want anyone to think that we're we're getting Sunoco money we're getting we're getting penalty money that was shared among a lot of a lot of the townships so I'd like to clarify that.
Now if this is the political season and I and I it is true that we got the money but I also think that virtually every other community that was in a path of Sunoco flight line also got some amount of money. It's a political season and uh the governor's offices were but we were a beneficiary of it. Um as a matter of fact Jason I don't know if anybody talked to you but as long as you're here we are going to try to get a a a list of all the grant money and the source of the grant money even if it came from DCNR or wherever somewhere's along the line like Chuck or or David has just mentioned there's the money is floating to those offices and those offices then send it down to us. So if we can do that we 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 want to make sure that all the representatives Carolyn and the senator are recognized through correspondence we want to we want to send correspondence to the to the people that are necessary. Um the Sunoco award that David just talked about happens to be associated with a penalty that they had that you some of you might remember that came came their way in these I think it was January it was around 1.2 million or something after that something like that or 12.1 or something like that was a significant penalty for some of the so many errors that in the ways that they did so it did turn out to be a help to us and certainly will be a help to us. And Jason we got a little bit more work for you to do uh and way of advertisement for those that are interested Jason will have again his Oktoberfest the pumpkin fest Saturday starting at 10:00 right?
Yeah Oktoberfest.
Oktoberfest or whatever pumpkin fest I call it whatever I want to call it Jason I have the microphone. But Jason puts a lot of work into this so if anybody's interested in going over there if anybody's interested in grabbing a egg pumpkin you're 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 welcome to go down there the kids have a great time and it's a it's a great affair it doesn't take too long probably inside a couple of hours anyway and if it's a nice day which I think it's going to be although a little cool it'll be a great day and uh those that haven't seen it I suggest you take a look at the the new park that we have for kids. It's fantastic and Julia said that she will come over Saturday and ride the zip line for us as a demonstrator. So with that Jason back up to Allentown. For those who don't know Jason lives in Allentown he goes back and forth every day which is somewhat hard to believe but he does. Okay Chuck I know you've been waiting for this the next item on the agenda is the comments of those of for items not on the agenda. Chuck Proctor is here for some reason this evening to tell us something and I hope you end up with the microphone. I will. Good.
Well Mr. Chairman as you know I'm not shy so I'll tell you off the bat I'm here to ask for some money. But I thought I'd temper that a little bit by giving you a report on what the historical commission is doing. First of all Ted Rogers has been an absolute spark plug for the historical commission. He is absolutely terrific and very passionate very enthusiastic very energetic and he's a great addition. However we've lost two other members so Ricky and I talked today we're going to work on getting the the membership back up on the commission uh one member moved to Dollar County and another member has not been to a meeting since January. So uh we need to we need the full seven people there. We have identified some action items that need to be done in order to reestablish the identity of the historical commission. The historical commission has been a little bit limbo in the last year or two or three and uh as a result the identity the mission statement the goals the drive just aren't quite there. One of the things we'd like to do is to send a letter with a questionnaire to owners of historical properties. The inventory is pretty complete you'll see in number uh two that we do need to add the Sullivan House and Hershey's Mill to that inventory but other than that we feel that it's pretty complete. And we would like to get feedback from those property owners and you'll see as you go through the list there there's some reasons why. Um the meeting could be a a meeting or a social gathering but something where we could encourage them to come out and share their concerns their ideas their goals uh what they're doing with their property. Ted Rogers has told us quite a bit about his property the three ton tavern there which everyone's familiar with. And uh get them more engaged with with what we have here the resources that we have in the township. So we're we're working on that um adding Sullivan's house to the inventory we think is significant particularly with the work that Hershey's Mills done to refurbish and and rehab the the facility it's an excellent facility. Uh I've been there several times for meetings. We would like to schedule meetings we're planning to schedule meetings with other townships other historical commissions to find out what they're doing for example at the bicentennial day uh two years ago uh I believe it was someone from Willistown gave a presentation on the Battle of the Clouds and it was an excellent presentation I know Marty you were there uh over there at the Chamber of Commerce building and that's the type of thing that we need to get more involved in because although we have members on the board like Ed Lendrath who's done a lot of research and Monica Close who's done a lot of research but now she's on planning uh we don't we don't have a unified uh understanding of of all the history and there's some books out. Um last night um uh one of the members brought a book that I'd never seen before not just the township book there's another book about uh life in Goshenville back in during the Revolutionary War days. It was a novel but it drew on actual letters and actual maps and actual things that happened in the township. We'd like to have a meeting with the historical commission the liaison from the board of supervisors uh former board members and members of the historical group known as the people that do the reenactments. Uh they're they don't come to our meetings but they're very active down there at the blacksmith shop and the plank house. Uh two weeks ago the the parking lot was jammed. Uh Karen from the Chester County Historical Society and um the property owners and get everyone in the room talking. Get them energized because the five of us and and unfortunately with schedules and what have you quite often it's tough to get a quorum going but to get people energized back into what we had a number of years ago. I'm gonna skip number five for the moment um one of the long-term goals and I I hope to have it for you next month is Ted Rogers came with the idea of a plaque and we've all seen some houses historical houses they have a plaque on them indicating approximately when they were built and what they might be named or what have you and he's going to do a mockup he and his daughter are gonna do a mockup to present to the board and uh it's a project where we can have property owners in the township display this on their house or on their property in some form. And finally we want to develop a new identity and mission statement for the historical commission because we think it's important. If if East Ocean is the destination that we believe it's been and that you're working for and that I worked for when I was on the board uh we need to continue the history of it as well. Ted Roberts says that he has a he shows a picture of it it's a a plaque or a painting in his house showing the three ton tavern and stated 1723 but our our records only go back to 1804. So we got a gap that pretty sizable gap there there's some things we'd like to do in that regard. In terms of money and John I'm gonna put this on you I think I think we have a couple thousand dollars in our budget I'm not sure but I think we do Ted came up with an idea and you'll see on the last page of your handout there this Christmas ornament idea. And his idea if you follow his presentation which is in pages two and three is that each year we would feature a historical site in the township and for a relatively reasonable amount of money we can have a Christmas ornament made and sell them uh and amount of money, we can have a Christmas ornament made and sell them and generate a profit. Not only to just get our money back, but generate a profit. If you look at his plan carefully, you'll see that he shows how each year we'd increase the number of ornaments. Each year, we'd make them available. And at some point, maybe even as a group, a series of them, and each featuring a different historical property, not just the Blacksmith Shop, but other properties within the township, some of which we have toured with Mark Gordon. Mark Gordon, during the summer months, would take us on tour of some of the different sites. I think it's an excellent idea to promote and a way to make some money and nothing that'll change John's budget over there. But it would make us self-sufficient within a couple of years. Ted believes within two or three years, we would be self-sufficient and we'd be able to handle funding ourselves. So my request is that, and Ted estimates between 1,800 and 2,400 dollars to get the initial 300 units produced, designed, et cetera, and available for this season. The only challenge is, we need to do it now. And I'm sorry to come to you at this late time. We should have come to you back in August. But Ted was only on the board, I think, only started last month. And right away, he's had ideas left and right. So he's been, like I said, a terrific addition. So we'd like you to consider that. And he would, he could have the design ready, the people that do the ornament, ready very quickly. And apparently, he's based this on another, a township down, I think it's North Carolina, that's been doing this.
South Carolina.
And South Carolina. And they have raised a significant amount of money and it's an ongoing program. And something, and we have, I don't know, what is it, Rick? Seventy or eighty properties on our inventory?
About, close to 100.
Close to 100. So we'll all be gone before we run out of properties to put out on the ornament.
Chuck, realistically, I like the idea. I've seen it in other, not townships so much, but other businesses. I really like the idea. Some people get into that. Realistically, isn't that too late this year?
Carmen, I agree with you. I think it might be late. But Ted thinks that he could get, get it shipped to us in time to have some impact. That's why he stayed on the low side with the 300 number. The first 100 covers the cost, the next 200 would be profit.
My concern is by the time you get them, now you're going to have to have functions to sell Pumpkin Festival.
Exactly.
We don't have anything big, we don't have, until the Christmas tree lighting that brings, I think Santa brings 250 or something like that. But people aren't going to spend that night. Most of them don't even have wallets. You don't have any places to sell them for 2018 is my, is, you know, sort of my problem. I like the idea, really.
Well, we discussed that. And just having them available in the lobby isn't sufficient. You have to do some other things as well.
What's the opinion of others?
But we.
First of all, Chuck, great to see you. And the work that you've done here to establish an energetic agenda, some of the new members are still looking for vacancies, fill a couple vacancies. But I think this is a great idea. I understand from John that the Historical Commission budget hasn't been expended at all. It's 2,400 dollars in it this year. I would support you in getting this, this first edition, if you will. And if they're not all sold at this Christmas, well, they'll be more valuable next year as a collector's item. And they'll be, instead of 25 dollars, they'll be 40 dollars. So I would support it, understanding that you're coming for us presently. But the information that you provided, the potential for sustainability of this, you buy, if you can have them made for eight or 10 bucks and sell them for 25, that sounds to me to be a pretty good proposition. And just energizing the history and getting people to think about it. Again, it's an important element. I'm fully supportive for this year. That's my comment.
John, I will second that. I think it's a good idea. For those that aren't familiar, we've had our ups and downs with the Historical Commission over time for one reason or the other. And we do have a group now that's very active with respect to the base responsibilities of the Historical Commission, as well as the ones that also worked out there on the days that they have the various programs down there. So it's a viable group. John, if they elected, if we elected to approve the expenditure tonight, is there enough money without failing to work something with respect to the Historical Commission budget for the year?
Yeah, I mean, the Historical Commission budget, off the top of my head, is about 2,800 dollars. And other than the cost for Recording Secretary and maybe a little bit of coal for down at the Blacksmith Shop, there hasn't really been any expenditure. So there's 2,400 dollars plus or minus that's unexpended in the 2018 budget.
I would think that, given that fact, I think it's important to support any group that wants to do this, particularly where they start small and expect to grow. And we will know if that happens. I've known Ted for a while. I've known him since he's been on the, his enthusiasm since he's been on the Historical Commission. He has a very nice property up there at the intersection of King Road and 352. They've done a lot of work up there. And I believe, and I think it's still true, the original living room in there is still the way it was back in the 1700s. Now, they have added some additions to the house. I think he's bringing his in-laws in as a matter of fact. But that doesn't stop the fact that it's definitely an historical building that has significant historical repercussions with respect to East Ocean. So I think that if the board agrees, we should have a motion to authorize their expenditure of 2,400 dollars to get this going now and let them take advantage of the rest of the season.
I would make a motion to accept the recommendation of Chuck Proctor as Chair of the Historical Commission and to authorize the expenditure of funds to enable them to have produced the first edition of these historical holiday ornaments and with dispatch.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. And I just have a question for John.
Sure.
There is no problem with an ABC board making a profit off of an item? So in other words, once somebody writes a check.
No, I mean, no, we did it with the book, remember? That was before my time. That was like 2010 when we ordered.
And we did it with, and the previous Historical Commission sold calendars.
I just wanted to make sure there's been no change.
You know, what's, you know, how do I say this? If the idea is that essentially, we're going to be budgeting, you know, you're going to be revenue neutral moving forward. That's from a budget standpoint. So it's, you know, based on kind of these numbers for 2019, that would be your budget for 2000. I mean, and that's essentially keeping it flat from this year. And then 2020, we'll see how it goes. And, you know, we can, we can increase accordingly. I mean, strictly speaking, the money's fungible. Any money that comes into the general fund is used for anything. But, you know, as far as just segregating it for budget and finance and accounting purposes, we can do that, no problem.
I'm just asking to make sure there's been no change in legislation.
No, 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 there should be no problem.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the only thing that comes to mind, and we can talk about this, Chuck, offline, but we would, we would have to charge sales tax on it. We do file for miscellaneous things that we sell. We do file every quarter for sales tax, usually not much. But we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. So.
Okay, we have some comments up here. Anybody in the audience have any comments? I'll pull a question. All of us in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck. Now, going back to your request for a liaison, I will tell you that we've had some confusion about that, which is why you probably haven't seen any face there. Let me turn the, turn the comments over to Cormac Close. He'll, he'll take care of that for you.
I officially abolished the Historical Commission. I think there was a mix-up. You know how we assign our ABCs at the beginning of the year?
Right.
There was a mix-up. I was hoping to put David on because he was a junior member and so forth, but it didn't quite work out. But there was a foul off somewhere. So I offered to keep a constant check on you. So I will be your liaison. And if I can't make it, I believe Michael will lift my back up.
Yes, I will. I got your back, Carmen.
Mike, we had some great discussions with your sister, so.
That's why Carmen is just the man he is. And I will be a second responder.
I just need everybody to remind me this is, this is new. So.
Help my sister.
I just want everybody who's here and those out in the streaming world to realize that our junior member, as we like to say, is not avoiding something to do. We have definitely loaded him up with things to do. And it would be grossly unfair at this stage of the game if he was also given that responsibility too. And thanks to Cormac, he stepped up and grabbed the bat and took a swing. So you will see him, I think, most of the time. If not, Cormac, you'll see him.
One last comment. The first ornament will be the Blacksmith Shop.
Yeah, that's good.
And Ted Kinnley said, as long as the three-ton tavern is within the first five.
And that's in the year five.
So we could do that.
He's in the first five, but he's in the fifth year where the profit is much more significant.
Much more significant.
So he's no fool.
You want to make Marty the second. He's getting close to 100 years.
There we go.
I thought that when you talked about the three-ton tavern, you were going to say the only reason we don't go all the way back is former Supervisor Chatley is still alive and well down in Delaware. And that's an inside joke, Murks, because Supervisor Chatley is a, well, God forbid that I would say this, but he's, he's the, he's an elderly citizen, I must say. So, and we accuse John of recreation in most of the historic buildings here in East Ocean. So let it be stopped at that. Chuck, there's exactly what I'm talking about. Well, I appreciate you jumping from here to down there with Historical Commission. I know it's a challenge. I know we still have to get this idea of the mission statement. And it may be mission statement A and mission statement B.
Exactly.
Towards your enacted, so to speak.
Exactly. Because there's two different factions. And I don't, they're both doing good things, but they're not on the same page.
Right.
And who needs to try to bring that together?
There's no question of that. And I agree with you. That's a little bit of a challenge, I must admit.
Yeah, that's been the biggest.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in line is Emergency Services Report. The chief is back there. I hope you weren't expecting down there, Brett Early, at your next meeting. But, you know, sometimes we just have to do what we have to do. You're not leaving, are you?
No, I'm coming up.
There you go. Chief or not, anybody that doesn't know who Chief or Not is?
Short and sweet this month. It appears that you've all been briefed on the homicide at Bellingham. The only thing that we're still working to resolve is, we're not satisfied with the communication. And we found that that's going to be a real challenge, finding the ideal way to communicate with all residents of the townships. So when we have something more solid, we're going to come back and let you know. There's disadvantages. Reverse 911 only hits landlines. Reddychesco is of good service, but I don't know if it's ideally what we want to use. Crime Watch was something that we considered using, but we don't have enough of the residents who've signed up for notifications. So we're looking for the ideal communication. And the other added factor is, no matter what media or medium that we use, a lot of senior citizens do not use electronics.
Correct.
So based upon that, it's a real challenge to find a communication system that's going to maximize the message that we get out. But that was the one factor when we did our debriefing, that we're not satisfied that we did as well as we could have done.
Along that line, Chief, just as a, just, I know that there was another meeting going on at the same time, which was unfortunate, but that's things happen. And obviously, different personnel are being, through their cell phones are being called, delaying to go to the situation. Is the communications for those that are necessary involved in whatever's going on, did the group that you, the group that did a back book at this, did they think that the communication in that arena was okay?
Yeah, the individuals like first responders, they were notified in a timely manner. We don't have a problem with that. Our problem is getting residents' information out to them immediate and then subsequent updates.
Did you say that the most residents weren't into electronics?
Senior citizens generally don't tend to be. And that's where we got our most negative feedback, was from like Hershey Mill residents, Bellingham, Wellington, et cetera. And like I said, trying to find a way to communicate with all citizens is important.
It's interesting because we make a concerted effort to get people in constant contact and really monitor successful. If in fact, electronic communication worked, it would be a wonderful way of sending and out for almost anything.
Right.
However, to consider using that is not, obviously, based on what you said and the limited number of people that we have on it, unfortunately, it's not going to be the solution to the problem. So it is, I agree with you, it's a challenge if you're.
Chief, our township, when, when Mark and I, Mark Miller and I were discussing it, he was in contact with John to go ahead and send out the East Ocean Township to shelter in place. And I said, that went out very, very smoothly. Now, the problem we have, again, we don't have a lot of residents connected to it. But I guess, I guess, sort of my statement is, we've been trying to do this now for probably five years with the electronics. We can only put so much water in the trough until it overflows. That's a Harold Renner joke, which is saying that if you can't get people to sign up, there's no way to notify them. We can't send someone door to door. Now, what would be interesting would be, let's use Bellingham as an example, because that's where the incident took place. If they were to have one of their floors, like their main floor, where they have someone at all times, if something could be done to one of their computers so that if East Ocean sent out a shelter in place, like they go, whatever, that something would flash on their computer, like an icon would flash, then they would have to determine whether it's going to affect them or whether it's on the other side of the township. I mean, you'd be, you'd be getting a hold of management if they would do it at night or whatever. I mean, is any thought like that?
We had a debriefing for Bellingham residents and their loved ones within three days after the incident happened. And that was one of the things that they talked about, is how they're going to handle internal communication. And they have several ideas planned. And once they work through their ideas, if we think it's a good idea, we'll probably approach the other large places like Wellington, et cetera, to try to share that information with them.
People in Hershey's Mill should, I think, all have landlines because our security system is based on a landline. So there should be a way of using reverse 911 or something to notify everybody there.
You can, but they have to sign up.
No, reverse 911 is automatic. If you have a landline.
No, I thought you had to accept it.
No.
I wish.
You don't have an option. The problem is that a lot of people call us later that they weren't happy with the information that they received from reverse 911 calls, that it was, the message did not repeat itself, that it was garbled, et cetera.
It was. I received the message. It was garbled. It was hard to understand. So, no, because the beginning of the message was cut off and it didn't repeat. So that could be, clearly that has to be fixed. But at least for Hershey's Mill, everybody should have a landline. So that should be the way of communicating with them.
Exactly.
Chief, I also point out, that night, I was at, I was at music lessons with my kids when I got a call from Mark Miller. I didn't have Wi-Fi. I had a new phone. I didn't have the constant contact app on my phone. I had to drive from music lessons, drop a kid off, come into the office to send the message out. If I had it on my phone, that message would have got sent out about 35 minutes earlier. As it was, I'd be DES by about 10 minutes to getting the message out. But what, what I like to, one of the things about constant contact is everybody's right. There's 1,900 people that are signed up for the important announcements. So, but once a message goes out, it spreads like wildfire. Like in my neighborhood and David's neighborhood and probably Mike Lynch's neighborhood, anybody who lives in a HOA, it all of a sudden immediately goes on a group, a lit service, an important thing. What I might like to talk to you about offline is, how can we expand constant contact so your folks, your officers can use it as a, as a emergency service platform? And I always, I felt very uncomfortable, to be honest, sending that email because I'm hearing things sort of secondhand and scattered. And I don't know what I'm sort of supposed to say to the public and not supposed to say to the public and.
That was our dilemma, is that trying to get reverse 911 and Reddychesco. That was our dilemma, is that trying to get reverse 911 and Reddychesco and Crime Watch, and we need to find a way to make sure that we're getting accurate, timely, and uniform messaging.
Yeah. So I'd like to talk to you, like, sort of offline separately, about what we can do as far as making township resources available for your folks to get, you know, emergency stuff out.
And the one thing a lot of people might not have been aware of is that East Goshen made sure that somebody from Public Works was here until the incident ended, so that we could utilize the building for the press conferences.
That is correct.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question. That evening when the incident happened...
Can you give me a video? Can you come on up here so that people in the streaming world can hear it, hear what you have to say?
And give your name, please.
You have to talk pretty close in the mic for it to carry out.
Thank you. My name is Christina Morley, and thank you for being here tonight. The evening that the incident happened, I believe it happened around 6:15 that evening. That was also, as you mentioned, the same evening that a meeting was being held at Fugate East High School that night. I was planning to go to the meeting that night. I was going to leave at about 6:30 from my home, which is in Marydale Pin Oaks, right very close to where Bellingham was. I heard all the sirens. I heard the helicopters. I thought, what's going on? I looked on Nextdoor, the app, and that's where I saw the news of the shooting that had happened. And that's when I decided I was not going to leave the house because it was so close. So that was at about 6:30 PM. I believe it was not until 7:50 PM that I got the notification by my landline and then on my cellphone through those constant contacts. So that was about an hour and 20 minutes later. So my question is, I know you said that we're working through the communication piece, but what would you estimate would be a reasonable amount of time between the actual time of the incident and when notifications like that can be expected? Because in that time, I was really getting most of my information from social media, which was Nextdoor, from Twitter, people who were listening to police scanners and reporting back. That's where I was getting my best information. So, thank you.
Unfortunately, when you have an emergency, your first response is to get to the scene and to handle that. So that was a first priority. Because we had such limited information, we couldn't tell you what to do or not to do, because we didn't know ourselves. It took us literally at least an hour to clear the building and to clear the area around the building to make sure that he wasn't still there. So we couldn't share information because we didn't know what to tell you at that point. Nobody saw him come in. Nobody saw him leave. It was only through quick investigation that we were able to determine that he was the probable individual who was responsible for it. And once we decided that he was possibly in the area, we had to clear the entire building. That was a challenge. That really was. To do it in such a way that was safe for the residents and safe for the officers was a challenge. It really was. Thirty-four years of law enforcement experience, I can say that was probably one of the most challenging incidents that we've ever had, because it was so dynamic. We didn't know where he was at any given time.
And there were three townships involved.
Oh, there were more than three townships.
It's like, yeah, where in Chester County?
You had the incident where he shot at his wife. You had our area, and there were multiple other areas that we had information that he was potentially there. So it was very dynamic. It really was.
My workplace was one of those other areas that you were probably looking at. One of his family members was one of my coworkers. And when I came into work the next day, an all-staff email said that police were dispatched to my workplace. I am still very deeply affected by this incident, because not only did it happen so close to my home, but it also was at my workplace, too. That's why I'm very concerned that that night, I almost left my home and entered an active shooting area. And I'm very concerned that this could happen again. I feel like in an active shooting scenario, I'm just wondering what can be done so that people, I mean, luckily, he had very targeted people that he was going after. He had an agenda that night. But if this were a different scenario, where you had a shooter on the loose who was just randomly going after people, I could have very well just walked into that situation. And so what I think I'm trying to get at is, is there a scenario where information can be pushed out in a quicker way, even if it's not fully complete information, but just telling people, lock your doors, don't leave, more information will follow? I think I would have felt much better knowing sooner, from an official source, not to leave, rather than just having to stumble upon it through Nextdoor or Twitter. It was very scary that night, I'm sure, as you know. I am the daughter of a DC homicide detective. I fully, I think I've had this conversation with you before. I have the utmost respect for the law enforcement men and women every day. I have a family member who is a lifetime FBI agent, a life firefighter. I admire you. I know the challenges that you face every day. I'm just hoping to work in a more collaborative way, because it seems like these things are closing in more and more and more and more in our community. It's very unfortunate, you know, a week later, the bank was robbed up at PNC. So, thank you.
We are certainly going to endeavor to make sure communication is a priority moving forward. I agree with you that it was disjointed that night. And one of the challenges is that we had so many jurisdictions. Again, I want to thank the township for opening up the building for us. It made things very nice for us, because we wanted to separate the families and people that were coming from the media, and that really helped us. And lastly, Marty, that was a beautiful letter that you wrote in behalf of the board of supervisors. The officers very much appreciated that.
I want to say for everybody's benefit that, and I've said it before, and others have too, when you think about the type of incident that we've had, it's amazing that it was able to become under control as fast as it did. And when you debrief this situation, you and those who did it, you only came up with one area that requires significant attention. I think that speaks really highly of all those that were involved in this particular situation. I noticed frustration on the part of individuals, because you just didn't know what was going on. I happened to be in that school at the meeting, and all these cell phones started going off, and no one had any idea of what was going on.
I left it.
Kormen left me an alert for me, because he was one of the first ones called, as a matter of fact. But I just want to thank all you, all the first responders, for the efforts that they put into this. And I know that as tough as it is, that sooner or later, you'll get this communication down. And I thank John for being willing to work with you to see what we can do here in a township.
John, thanks for what you did. I didn't realize you had to go through what you did. Thank you for getting that out.
Okay, chief, thank you.
And as far as the PNC goes, there was an arrest made in that. That's good news.
Does anybody have any questions for chief, as long as she's here? I know she has to go something else.
October 22nd, 11 to 2, Giant Westchester Pike. Join us for coffee with the cop. It's a good opportunity to sit down and have another conversation. And I'm very relaxed, and we have three whole hours to sit with you. So please join with us. Anything else?
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Have a good night, chief.
No speeding, chief, no speeding. The next thing I'd ask, Kormen, Batavio, our fire marshal, Tru, give the monthly report on the Goshen Fire Company, Malvern Fire Company, and Good Fellowship Fire Company, and his own fire marshal, reported through his own.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report, but I'll give you the stats for the companies. Goshen Fire Company for September, for fire, for East Goshen, were 24 calls. For fire police, 17 calls. Emergency services, 187 calls. Again, that's for September. Malvern Fire Company for September, they had 36 calls. Seven were basic, or BLS, with five transports, and 29 were advanced, or ALS, with 18 transports. And Good Fellowship, who takes care of the other half of our property, our township, for East Goshen, the monthly calls was 54, or 9.5% of their call volume.
Anybody have any questions for Kormen?
I have one question. You might like to...
Here.
I'll use this one. Kormen, we had a discussion a while ago about the use of emergency services for both Bellingham and Wellington. If you look at the statistics compared to other townships, you know, just looking at Goshen, we're twice West Goshen. Is that because of the... And are they using our EMS services appropriately?
No, to be real, Tru, this has been an ongoing problem. I've got some remedies, but it's, and others have remedies, but it's a matter of, I hate to say this, pulling the trigger on it and following up. Because of the call volume, what happens is, some of the aides in there at night, let's start with what the actual calls are. Some of the aides in there at night, if I fall out of bed, they won't pick me up, because they're not going to take the responsibility of me having an injury. If I have a neck injury, and they just pick me up and throw me back, not throw me, but me back in bed. So they will call 911. So we will get a call with potentially an ambulance coming, and potentially, in the beginning, the ALS coming in to lift up a patient. So we've been trying to work through that with management. In my opinion, and this is just an opinion, there should be some sort of a maximum allowance, and then Bellingham is charged, who charges the patient, or however it works, for what we call a non-service call. You can't not respond once we're called, because we don't know what it is. It could be, I could have fallen out of bed because of a heart attack. So you have to respond until you know differently. Yes, that is a problem. Anybody that has nursing homes, or in an older retirement village, or older residents in a certain area, will notice an increase in call volume, and it's not the fault of the people. It's just the nature of the bodies.
To answer, David, to answer your question, Kormen answered it from an operating standpoint, and he's absolutely correct. We have talked about this for years, with respect to the impact that Bellingham and Wellington, and to a degree Hershey Mill, has on our EMTs and first responders. Because in some cases, the police also go on these calls. The problem is, we have no authority under the second-class township code or under any legislation to do anything more than what we're doing. And that's basically to ask them to do something. We have to use our influence, if you will. Well, that only goes so far, for incompetent station claims, or decisions, negligence, or whatever. So I would say that this is a recurring problem, that we want to get it fixed, but we don't know how to get it fixed, because we don't have the legislation behind this to authorize us to do anything more than we're doing. So it is a definite problem, and it makes us a lot different with respect to our call volume than other communities, for sure. If you happen to come up with a solution, we would love to hear.
Let you know.
So anyway, is there any public comment on this? Because this is...
Do we have any comment? I thought that was the dog's comment. I have a public comment that has loved to do with this.
Well, all right, let's finish this, and you can come up. Anybody have a comment on this particular subject matter? Anybody else? So we'll continue to work on it, and we'll have to talk about it some more. We did, I will say this, we have talked about, we don't know if we ever did it, to actually have a couple of us and talk about the severity of the situation. Kormen tends to get there on a somewhat regular basis with respect to fire marshal duties, and I know he's talked to them about that. We maybe need to formalize it and see if we can get anywhere. But it is one of those things where we're going to have to use political persuasion. Is there any other comment, public comment there? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Come on up, Bill. Introduce yourself, and then go from here.
Got it, Marty. The question I would have is truly a request moving forward. I, first of all, thank you for the pipeline task force nomination. Look forward to that meeting on the 12th. I'd like to get a schedule update each week, every other week, when we come to the board, on the status of the schedule for Mariner 2, neighborhoods within the community, on what is the status of Mariner right now. A lot of people don't know what's going on with Adelphia, because they pulled out from behind my home, there was a crew of about 12 putting a fence up along 352 a couple of days ago, driving a high-impact, looks like a much more pronounced fence than they had in the past. But there's a lot of, so what I would request is, perhaps we can get Sunoco to give us an update for the next meeting. Adelphia gives us an update for the next meeting. We can read it off, this is a schedule on what their plan is, because right now, I hope Sunoco is probably at least a year behind. And then every two weeks, just give an update on, has anything changed? And again, the request for that comes because we get this information in the mail, this came from Energy Transfer at my home this week, facts about pipeline safety, it goes over everything in English and Spanish. What should happen with leak, this is the same stuff we had a year and a half ago. Also, on the Adelphia Gateway Project, not a lot of news on that, and I haven't gotten much, besides the emails that I read. So my request to the board would be, perhaps, whatever your contacts are with Sunoco, Energy Transfer, whatever your contacts are with Adelphia, give us an update for the next meeting, and then each meeting consecutively passed, and every two weeks, has there been any changes? We can help disseminate...
We can do that, because it's not, it's really not difficult at this stage of the game. I will tell you, from my own experience, somebody has Ricky to lay in on this. Sunoco was not free with their information. As far as I know, we can't find out anything, at least from my perspective, we can't find out anything with respect to their timeline. And I'm guessing at this, there are legal issues that are out there, and I, that are involved in this area where the 12-inch bypass pipe is being used. I have a feeling that they don't want to bring any equipment back until all those issues are resolved, because they don't want to get three-quarters of this thing done, and it's had one quarter left over, and it's holding up the whole project. That's just a guess on my part? As far as Adelphia, I haven't heard anything. I'll let Rick speak to that. But we can certainly do that. However, I would expect, unless you see some activity, for you folks that are close by, if you don't see some activity going on on the various sites, I would suggest that there is nothing in the offering that's going to happen. Now, if we happen to find out ahead of something happening, we will certainly let everybody know. But there's no problem giving an update. Ricky can give an update every meeting. There's no problem whatsoever.
Marty, if we can have some update from Sunoco to say, their best knowledge is right now, we'll have it completed.
You can't argue an update from Sunoco.
We're going to try, I'm going to try my avenues as well. And the same thing with Adelphia, just to give the community somewhat of an update on the people that we talked, or one of the, don't know if it's rumor, don't know if it's factual information, that Sunoco is now pulling out, because it's now into the winter months, and they won't be doing it. They were drilling it this time last year. So I don't think the fact that they're pulling out just in fall, because we're going into the winter, is an accuracy.
I haven't heard that, but it's possible. But we'll do that. Ricky has a very good view of communication with some of the forces, I will tell you. I'm not suggesting it, others, maybe it's you, maybe it's Ron, maybe it's anybody that's in the room, that might have some information. We will have, if we get a rumor, we'll run it by. We can certainly do both of the pipelines. I've heard, I've heard nothing about Adelphia, to tell you the truth, but maybe Ricky has. Ricky, without dragging us out, do you want to talk about each one of them?
Regarding Sunoco, we have been advised that they're, what they're calling at the beginning, they're reevaluating the HCD sites. There is nothing that prevents them from digging, drilling in East Goshen Township. And the only activity I know they're doing in Chester County is some above-ground work, specifically in front of the Bellingham, Wellington, excuse me. And my recollection on Adelphia is that they were in the process of working on an environmental impact statement. So they solicited proposals, and that was in the process being developed.
So with that being said, then...
I could add to the agenda.
We'll just try to get an update.
I could add to the agenda, but yeah.
All right. Let me say something that, it's unfortunate, but I'm going to say it anyway. The Cato Organization, that's the Chester County Association of Township Officials... The Cato organization, that's the Chester County Association of Township Officials, which you've heard me talk about before, has a Pipeline Task Force in existence. And Rick and I are all in that task force. Just recently, that task force had a meeting with the PUC and some vice presidents and other operating personnel from Energy Transfer Partners, which is the first time that I've seen them have anything like that up here. You would say, well, you must have some information. I got some information for you. We filed to be an intervenor in the, in the Dinaman situation down in West Wayson. And guess what? They disinvited us to the meeting because we were an intervenor. So we have no knowledge of what transpired in that meeting. We don't know if there'll be another one. We have not seen minutes of the meeting, which I understand will be produced at some point in time. So I don't know what was said there, dear it is Rick. So it would be interesting, I mean, one of the questions that we would have asked us, because we're the only ones that are involved on that task force, that are involved in a community that has the pipelines, is what is your schedule? We would probably get the answer that Ricky said, that, you know, they're evaluating, we know that. If they chose to go to open cut in a lot of areas that were originally HDD, they're going to have to get new permits. Then it just doesn't happen, they just can't bring in their stuff and start doing it. In front of the giant supermarket, it was originally planned to be open cut, and it is open cut. And I don't know, it's taken forever to do that work. Our public works guys say, my God, I'm waiting, what are they going to take? Because there's been a heck of a lot of money over there just for those machines, let alone anything else. So we will be happy to do what you're asking. I would not expect to learn a lot, certainly from Sunoco, I'm not sure about Adelphia. They seem to be a little bit more open. I know that, it was August, I believe, they were, they were to hold a hearing on this, and I believe at that point they were going to have this environmental impact, or whatever you call it. But that hasn't happened yet, as far as I know. And there's like three hundred intermeaters to that Adelphia pipeline situation. They are fully aware that they have put in the backwash to Sunoco's situation. And Adelphia's entirely different project, but it has slowed down dramatically because of the repercussions with the Sunoco situation. It's entirely different.
Appreciate you, I'll see you on the draw.
Thank you. Come on up, Lex.
Thanks. Lex Padlo, six eleven South Speakman Lane. I haven't been here for a while, I'm kind of busy, but nice to be back in the game. Good to see you all. And thanks for, now I was in the original meeting in May, that task force roundtable, so kudos to executing that. I recognize that it's a first of a kind, so you have a stellar crew there, with David and Michael, and part of it, I'm quite certain to be some really good work done. You guys can keep doing what you're doing, there's a group that can do that, so I just wanted to make note of that. I am an intervenor for the Adelphia pipeline, so I've had probably six emails a day on everything that's going on. And I think you're a hundred percent right. I think it's because of the Sunoco incompetence or lack of transparency, now all of a sudden Adelphia's got caught up in it. And with that in mind, I brought a letter here tonight from the Commissioners of Cumberland County, that is addressed to Gladys Brown at the PUC, it was dated October eighth, I'm probably certain you guys have all seen it. Linda Farrell is actually heading to New Orleans, she was invited to speak at a Pipeline Safety Conference, and actually Senator Dinaman will be there too, to talk about how people have kind of stood up and, you kind of made their thoughts. Linda is trying to work with the Chester County Community, I guess the parallel up to the Commissioners of Cumberland County, maybe it's Cato, there's a Chester County Community group, and she's going to try and get a letter.
She's been with us also.
Yes. And so my thinking is, there's multi-layers to getting things visible, and I just wanted to leave this copy of this letter for you folks as an idea, again, as a part of leadership. Would it make sense for the Board of Supervisors to put together a letter to support what the Cumberland County Commission, and I think what they're saying here is, if you read through it, it's asking Sunoco, and soon we'll have to ask Adelphia, and maybe Williams, for just a monthly update on what's going on. The transparency saves a lot of headaches, right? And it shrinks these meetings' times, because you guys all have places to go and people will meet, you know, and then we somehow stumble into this on a somewhat regular basis. But I'm asking to consider putting together a letter of support to Honorable Gladys Brown, acknowledging the letter from the Commissioners of Cumberland County, and it can be something as simple as one paragraph, to basically say, where the pipeline highway...
We can do that, we can also, those of us that are at these meetings, it's a lot easier to talk to them. Because the key people happen to be there, it's not, it's not just people way down in the totem pole, it's the people at the top of the totem pole. Now, I will tell you this, that Cato was working on developing issues that need to be addressed with respect to the safety of pipelines, specifically NGLs. And we asked Carolyn Cometa, which she did, to arrange a meeting with the PUC to get their feedback, so we wouldn't duplicate that. When we had that meeting, low and behold, did we not find out that they were already preparing something for the PUC, the PUC internal, for the PUC to consider, that had twenty-seven recommendations. We asked if we could see it to respond to that, they said no until it gets into Pennsylvania and Walton. So you have to watch that, that should be shortly, and then we have the opportunity to weigh in with either things that should be taken out or put in, and that we think would be appropriate. Now, that said, it wipes us out from what we were doing per se. So we started talking about what we might do. Well, that might do ends up in the area of communication of the pipelines with respective agencies, or people, or elected officials, or whatever, to get this communication solved so that people do know what's going on. Now, that said, it is going to take a while to, A, because you're responsible, we're responsible for doing the work, we're Cato. They, you can't just set it up there as an idea and expect them to do it. You have to do it yourself, and then they evaluate what you're recommending. So it's going to take a while to do that, takes a while to get it on the PUC agenda, if they assume to do that anyway. And we've also found out that if you go to the legislative group, which some of this stuff is, Bill may have already found this out, it takes light years to get anything done. Because first of all, you've got to marshal your forces to find out who's going to support it, and then there's a, you've got to, you've got to make sure that the North agrees with the South and so forth and everything. So it's, it's a very, very difficult situation that takes an enormous amount of time and patience. But we are at least getting together now with the key officials periodically, and that never happened before. So there is some improvement to share.
I agree, and I just, I don't want to take up any more time, but Dylan and Ron do a great job of not only attending these meetings and sharing not just their opinion, what the citizens and residents of Bowtree and East Goshen are, you know, questioning, but we've met with Rafferty, we've met with Cometa, we've met with, you know, and Rafferty had a great line, he said, Lex, it's twenty-six and one oh two, twenty-six votes in the Senate and a hundred and two in the state. So we can get everybody on this side of the state to say, wait a minute, we've got to get something done. But the reality is, to your point, and I, this, you and I don't always agree, but we're probably more in line in a lot of different ways than you might think, but it takes a starting point to get to, you know, finish line. So I just want to say, thanks, I'll leave this with you, you probably, folks probably have it.
Lex, I just want you to know that we always agree, it's just that you don't understand how we care.
As always, thanks, appreciate it.
We'll take care of that. Come on up, Bernie. And Ron.
Bernie Greenberg, eight ninety-four Jefferson Way. As an Adelphia intervenor, I got an email this a couple of days ago about four alternate sites for the Pioli Pipe Valve Site. Do you know anything about it?
Yeah, we have, go ahead, Rick. We have a site, they have an existing location right off Bailey Pike across from the Chinese Restaurant. So I'm not sure why they're going to be open for an alternate site.
Well, the emails stated that they were looking at four alternate sites.
I don't think it's any...
Alternative sites.
The only possibility could be is if they're doing a, if they're applying for some type, most, some of these federal permits or store work permits you have to apply for, the existing sites is probably wetlands or floodplains, that they have to demonstrate that that site where it's at is still the best site, and even though these other sites are available, that they're not suitable.
Okay, one other question. The twelve-inch pipeline, which is now called apparently Mariner East Period, is that going through East Goshen Township?
There's an eight-inch line and a twelve-inch line that are underneath the Boot Road and Norchester Road, right through the middle of East Goshen. The eight-inch line is currently in service, is sending NGLs from the west to the east, and that twelve-inch line is the same line they're talking about repurposing. So it's the same, it runs down Boot Road or runs down right down...
Basically, okay.
It's in East Goshen, and it was, they installed, they did one half in nineteen ninety-nine, replaced one half part one, the upper stuff in nineteen ninety-nine, the lower stuff in two thousand five. So East Goshen has new pipe in our township.
Bernie, I think the answer to your question is, that pipe's been there for a long time. It's been upgraded back in ninety-nine. It sent fuel oil out west, somewhere along the line a couple of years ago, they must have thought they were going to run into a problem, as far as I can tell. They decided that they're going to, well, turn the thing around and send NGLs over, and they formulated this thing. With all the chaos that took place with West Wayland and so forth, and so on in West Goshen, and all the other ones that had a problem with them, they decided that now, they've got, they've got a hell of a lot of pressure on them, because they have not had the twelve, the twenty, the twenty-inch and the sixteen-inch in service. So they put this twelve-inch in the northern part of Chester County, down into Middletown Township, like Glenside School, I think it's called, elementary school, they're going to hook it up to the twelve-inch line, the rest of the state will be the twelve-inch line, this will be a constraint on what can be put through the pipeline with respect to the twelve-inch. But that has been in East Goshen for years, it's just that it sent fuel oil out to the west, and now it's going to send NGLs back to the east.
Yeah, it's been repurposed, so it's, because they can't, they haven't completed that...
I think it's called repurpose, there's another word they use, right Ricky? It's re-something, but I don't think...
They're changing the product, they're probably changing...
It's a re-change in the product, I forget the exact word.
So we don't, but as of now, it hasn't been...
I don't think it's energized yet, as far as I know.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, that was the one, that there was an article in the paper recently about the water, the pressure test, and the green, the green stuff came up, and it was a big debate about whether or not it was from the pressure test or not, and for a while, they were saying, now, and all of a sudden they say, no, we really didn't test it, we don't know. And I don't know if they've gone back and done it or not. Somebody else may know that, but I don't know if they've done it or not. But I, they have not energized the pipe yet, as far as I know. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let Ron do it, he had his head up first. Go ahead, come on up, Ron. What a beautiful pair of shoes that is.
I'm Ron Coco, six thirty-three North Speakman Lane, West Chester P. A., and first of all, I'd like to echo Lex's comments, we really do appreciate, I think when, you know, we started talking about the pipeline a year ago, I couldn't be happier with the focus and the attention that we're getting from the board. I think we're all kind of in this together, we all recognize some of the concerns that are out there, and, you know, secondly, I appreciate your frustration with, you know, with Son. I think one of the things that we pride ourselves with, we don't just ask other people to check and do things, we try to be proactive ourselves, and I've developed a pretty good relationship with Ivana Wolf, and the good news is, she's pretty responsive and getting back to me, that's the good news. The bad news is, you know, you always seem to kind of get the runaround, and one of the things I just reached out to her on was, you know, the timeline. We're getting more and more concerns from our residents, you know, what's going on? We don't see anything happen, it's month after month, when they first came here, six months, and they were going to be gone. And, you know, she's very good at kind of dancing around the answers, and kind of gave the same answer, I think, Rick, that you said, that they're reevaluating every open trench and every directional drilling, and that's the reason for the holdup, and, you know, they hope to get some kind of a plan in place, but she couldn't share any timeframes. And what she always does, she refers me to the website. And, you know, when I went on the website, one of the things that's still in there, which shows you how far behind they are, their website, and I just checked it last week, says they're going to be finished by, Mariner Two is going to be finished by the end of September. So they haven't updated it for months and months. But the one issue that I had, and Rick, I brought it up once before, a few months ago, and I asked again to Ivana, and one of the concerns that I've always had is the depth of the pipe itself. And she, on that question, she referred me, you know, back to the website. Well, when you go on their website, it talks about the directional drilling being anywhere from twenty to a hundred and twenty feet in depth, that's what they say the average is. But Rick, if I recall, when I asked that question before, it was your understanding that through East Goshen, for the most part, it was only five feet in depth. Did I misunderstand what...
That's the, that's the open cut. The directional drilling in East Goshen is forty-nine feet.
Forty-nine feet, what's the average?
If you go on our website, there's a list of each drill site and each plan, there's a plan that shows the profile, and you can find your ass, and you see, and you can see how, behind your ass exactly how deep it is. The directional joint plans are on our website, so...
If they do HDE.
Yeah, if they continue to do it, yes.
Okay, so you're saying on average, it's forty-nine?
Forty-nine on average, but the other, five feet is the open cut.
Like in front of Giant, where you dig the...
Oh, okay, no, I understand. I know all about open cut, but...
But it varies, depending on how close you are to where the drill goes in the ground.
Well, no, and I understand that too, that, you know, when you directional drill, when you start out, you're at the surface, and it goes down, and then it eventually, at a particular depth, it starts going hard on.
I just want to be clear, as I understand, the average depth is the average of the lowest point they get in that drilling sequence.
Okay.
So if you average them all out, it comes to forty-nine feet. There may be some a little less, maybe some a little more, but we don't go that far down because we don't have that many problems. Rick will tell you this, I have been a little bit more than a little bit in meetings, asking if we can have Sunoco come and put the damn pipe in the ground in East Goshen and restore the ground, and I don't care if it's here for a hundred years with nothing in it. They have, they have said that Energy Transfer in Texas calls all the shots, and they have been told to do nothing until they have been told to do something. So you're really not dealing with Sunoco, you're dealing with Energy Transfer Partners in Texas. They are controlling everything. And Sunoco cannot move until they're told what to do. This much I know for a fact. And we are not going to get that pipe in the ground unless some miracle happens, which hasn't happened yet. Mark Miller, who works with us here, Director of Public Works, has a very strong relationship with the construction superintendent for this section of pipe. He has asked if we can, if they could do that for us. He said, absolutely not, we have instructions that we can do nothing, and to be told from Energy Transfer Partners in Texas what to do. So you may find out from Ivana that we deal with too, but she's not going to know anything until she's told what to do from her hierarchy, her hard people, our people, and they're going to be told from Energy Transfer Partners in Texas.
Well, when you, there is an eight-hundred number on the website, I actually did call that too, and Rick, I don't know if you've ever talked to a guy by the name of Mark Davis, he's the one that responds to the eight-hundred number on their website, and, you know, he pretty much said that too, that, you know, it just seems like for the most part, the people you talk to are kind of in the dark, whether they're told and, you know, say that they're in the dark, or whether they're actually in the dark, I guess it's hard to really know.
Ron, the other thing that we, that we should confirm, and this is kind of a whisper down the alley a little bit, we know that they're hooking up some of the current Mariner Two line to the twelve-inch line, that's already in the ground. But we're also, I have been told to stop thinking of it as Mariner, the twelve-inch line, the twenty-inch line, and then the Mariner Two line, because they're going to connect all three of those lines wherever they can to get product flowing. So that's an interesting issue, because they're going to be having pipes of different sizes hooked together and moving in different areas, so, you know, that's a, that's a particular...
So not necessarily a continuous sixteen, a continuous twenty?
That's correct. Yeah, stop thinking about it as three separate lines, and think of it temporarily as a Frankenstein hobbled together.
I mean, doesn't that increase the risk of more wells and connections?
That's one of the things that, that, you know, a question that should be asked. That's one of the things that, you know, a question that should be asked and answered by Sunoco.
That I also would imagine would be a potential pressure issue, right? When you have different sized lines to control the consistency of the 12-inch-
Well, they would deal with that through engineering. I mean, they've got people that can handle that. The problem is, they're going to try to temporarily get product through. I'm not saying-
No, but I'm saying, you know, look at the record of what's happened with our engineers and all the issues they had. So, you know, I don't sleep any better at night thinking that they have the engineers they need to-
I mean, they're out there, but maybe not with Son.
Correct, exactly.
They have problems, but best I know, that there's a 20-inch pipe line at the northern part of Chester County. There will be one hookup, and down at the school, Glen Side School in Middletown Township, there's another 12, 20-inch pipe that takes it down the rest of the way to Morpheus Hook. For this section here, as far as I know, it's a 20-inch from both ends. Now, there may be, the 16-inch may come into play in other places, or I have not heard it all coming into play here, because there's really two defined areas. The pipe is in the ground, and it goes down to Morpheus Hook, and the northern part of Chester County has been done for quite a while. They've actually been restored up there, played through. So I think that, as far as here is concerned, there's only a 20 and a 20. And that, and yes, there is, the 12-inch does limit what they can put through the pipeline, because even though you've got a 20-inch, the pipe, the 20-inch or the 12-inch is a engineer, well, engineers can tell you what the reduction in flow is. The point of the matter is, though, that they now have at least been able to say to shareholders and whomever that they now have this NGLs flowing. And noting the way they communicate, it's very possible that they talk about it being communicated or transferred in the 20-inch line.
So you're saying their 12-inch is in operation now?
No, it's still in operation yet, because I don't think they've completed the pressure testing, as far as I know. And I don't think they've resolved that problem in West Goshen, or West Whiteland, with respect to the rollback they got on the green, the green, which appears to be the test water.
Will you know, I mean, will they have to notify the township when the 12 is operational?
That's a good question. I'm not sure that they do.
No?
There's no reason, there's no registration that says they have to.
No.
And I don't think they're going to do it under room resolution.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your time.
But Bill, if he wants to establish a relationship with Energy Transfer Partners, which will be a, let me put it this way, they had it out in the paper. I called the president's office, and introduced myself and told him who I was. Told to a secretary, I said, I'm not here to, you know, to raise fire and hell, but it might be interesting for the guy to hear from me. Never got a call back. Not even called back from anybody, nobody. So the odds of getting through to them are slim and none. And when they want to blow the whistle, they're going to blow the whistle. So we can work with the legislators, and we can work with the PUC here on issues. When it comes to what the hell is going to happen, it's all down in Texas, and when it's going to happen. And I got to tell you, so far, the only, the only thing I, well, I regret a lot of things, but the fact that we weren't, Rick and I, were not able to go to that meeting is most unfortunate, because I can tell you for sure that I would have asked the questions that you're asking of us right now, because I know what they are. Whether they answered them or not is another matter. I would have rather heard it right from their mouth, because I know that they had vice presidents here that were part of the hierarchy. Unfortunately, we weren't able to go. So the question is, should we have intervened? We did the right thing? It cost us the opportunity to be, to be with them. If, I hope, we've got to get moving on, because there's some of us here that want to go to bed tonight. But so, this is the last question now, we'll go back to the gentleman.
So I'm going to go back to what David Shewy just said about the Frankenpipe. It's being put together between the 12-inch, the 8-inch, the 20-inch. And I know that Carmen just said we'll leave it up to the engineers about the pressure, but I do want to put this on everybody's radar. You're absolutely correct. What this is putting in place is a scenario that creates pressure issues. You were right on target, too. If you look back at San Bruno in California, and you read the reports that identify what the cause of the explosion in California was, it was a pressure problem. And what the California PUC decided afterwards was, one of the recommendations was that the max operating, max allowable operating pressure, the MAOP, can only be as much as what the weakest part of a pipe can handle. There are no regulations in Pennsylvania as far as MAOP. So what this leads us with, leaves us with, is that Sunoco is going to determine what the maximum pressure is. And if you listen to any of the Sunoco investor calls, they are going to push this pipe to the maximum pressure. And so it's going to be, again, up to people like us and people like you to make sure that the integrity of this pipe is not exceeding what it can hold. And when Marty just talked about the hydrostatic testing that was done up there, and the lies that were told to both PHMSA about the samples that were taken and tested, and that no problem was detected and later found to be not true. It's going to be up to us to be really vigilant in making sure that this community is safe when that line goes into operation, asking for the reports of the hydrology tests, the hydrostatic testing. Making sure that we see what this pipe can actually withstand. So I encourage that, to really be on front and center on our radar. The other thing that kind of concerns me is that when I read in the newsletter and the minutes and stuff like that, I see that activities are still progressing with the Futurist Committee about making the town center right over here on Paley Pike, which is kind of like right at ground zero of where all these pipelines are passing under. And it just keeps coming to mind, so why are we creating this pedestrian zone right over there where people are going to be gathering when we know that this could be a potential catastrophic area if something goes wrong? Why not make it, why not make it, why not make it at the other end of Paley Pike? Somewhere away from it, where people aren't going to tend to gather with their families and their young children? It really frightens me to think that.
Let me use your comment, then, Cora, because I have a deal-
Well, I'm not on this question, I want her last question. I need to, I need to make sure you understand. When I made that remark, that was not saying that I approved it.
I know.
I just said that they're going to have to engineer it, meaning that they're going to have to put pressure behind it to get from point A to point B. I don't say that I approve doing it, but that's what they're going to have to do. I didn't also, I didn't approve it, I just need to make sure, because you put my name out there.
Well, I know, but you said, well, that's like left to the, that's up to the engineers. But I think that we have to be the watchdogs of them.
We are, but ultimately, they're going to engineer it, and what may happen is our engineers may double-check it. I don't know.
Right, so all I'm just saying is that we really have to watch that.
I just need to be sure that my name was thrown out there. I need to make sure that it was understood what I said, that it wasn't saying, go ahead and do whatever you want.
Yeah, it wasn't, I, you were not saying, go ahead and do whatever you want. I don't think anybody here is giving Sunoco free pass to do whatever they want.
I think we're pretty attuned to the fact that there's issues. The problem that we have with Sunoco, very simply, is if they deem this stuff to be confidential, which we probably have, you can't get along with it. It's that simple. Now, if the PUC wants to release it, I mean, if it is not confidential, if you see what's released, they will. Or not, depending upon what they want to do. But if it's confidential, which I suspect that it is, then it's part of the state act that has to do with confidentiality of this information, and it will not be released. So I doubt, my speculation is, it would be very difficult to get that information.
The results of the hydrostatic testing?
I don't, I, you know, we can try, you can try, or anybody can try, but I think it's going to be privileged information and probably will not be released. But who knows? But I, all I know is, as far as I can, as far as the information and sources I have, they're still testing the 12-inch line, and at least here, the two ends are in the 20-inch line. Now, whether there's 8, 20-inch or 16-inch, other parts of the state, I don't know. But right here, it's a 12 hooked to 220s. And that's the best I know. I don't not think that they've changed anything. They certainly haven't changed the size of the 12-inch line. And it only hooks up to the other, to the two ends, and they were both 20 inches. So my guess is, they can't operate the system at a pressure greater than what the 12-inch line can handle.
The 12-inch.
I don't know, from an engineering standpoint, I know that. Now, whether or not they're going to try to exceed that, I don't know.
Right.
Now, I'm going to ask Rick, and this will be the end of this discussion, to share what he knows with respect to the PUC, and pins it on exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah, my pronouns are pretty touchy tonight.
No, well, as you know, Pennsylvania has a contract with Department of Transportation to basically act as PHMSA's agent. Now, both PHMSA and the PUC have reviewed and inspected their integrity management plan with deals with shovels, there's a maximum output pressure and that type of stuff. So as Marty noted, they'll determine what the maximum output pressure is, and Sunoco will have to hear that. And the only other comment I want to make is, putting the, you create pressure in the line by putting a pump or something, or a pump or compressor on it. The fact that they put a 12-inch section in a 20-inch line can't increase the pressure. It can reduce the flow rate or reduce the flow, but it can't increase the pressure because it's not a mechanical means to add pressure to it. It's no different than if you have a car, there's a U-square border on your car, and then you go out and buy this turbo booster that's going to increase the pressure to wash your car. Unless there's a pump in that pressure, in that booster, you can't increase it. So unless they add another pump somewheres, the pressure in that 12-inch line can't be any greater than what it is in the 12, in the 20-inch.
Right, they would have to add-
A pump.
A pump, a pump wherever they, basically wherever they reduced and increased.
Yeah.
Which would be terrible.
So essentially, what we have here is, I would use it, as you would look, if you find on a turnpike, you're driving along a two-lane road, all of a sudden, there's a work zone, they'll all reduce it down to one lane, and everything slows down. Still have the same, you have less cars going through because everybody had to slow down. And essentially, that's what we will have here. Assuming they get their plan in operation to have the 20-inch, and they still have work to do out in western part of state, a couple of ACV crossings, some pump stations, but assuming they get all that together, and they hit the 20-inch connected to 12-inch up in Albertson, 12 is connected back to the 20 is down in Delaware County, and then put that in operation. But right now, they're still, like I said, they've still got some odds and ends to do on that project.
Using that same analogy of the garden hose, you turn on the spigot, it's flowing out, you cover up part of it with your thumb, doesn't it come out with greater force?
No, it's the same force, in other words, you're not increasing the pressure. If you put a pressure gauge on your garden hose with no work coming out, it's going to show you 45, 50 pounds. When you open the valve up and start squirting it out, it's going to show you 45, 50 pounds. Otherwise, because it can't increase it above 45, the original 45, 50 pounds.
What you're doing with your thumb is just making a temporary blockage, but you can't increase-
The pressure.
The pressure.
The pressure is, whatever Aqua supplies, in his case, whatever water is in your house, is, that's what's going to come out through the hose, unless you put a booster pump. Same with Sunoco, if it's 2,000 pounds, and they reduce it, and then go back up, it's still 2,000 pounds, but it's going into different pipes, so you're going to reduce the flow.
Okay, what about the Futurist Committee planning this whole center over right where all the pipelines are coming through?
Let me talk about that. Anyway, let's just cut to the chase.
Yeah, why are we putting everybody, why are we having everybody gather right where the pipelines are coming through?
There is no funding available for any Goshenville, like, pedestrian area. There is a plan to put a trail there, but as far as what you're reading in the newspaper, those are like, those are master plans that have no funding behind them. There is no available funding for them at this point. Any discussion about what Goshenville is or isn't is premature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are done. We've exhausted, like me. So John is-
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to just rush through this, guys, because it's 8.45. So I'm just going to go really quickly on the calendar.
John's turn.
Okay, so guys, I've changed the year-end projection, the general fund, to a deficit of 171,000. That's a $30,000 improvement over a month ago. That's due to, I think, savings that we can lock in from the repaving this season, as well as higher-than-expected real estate transfer taxes. Other funds, the sewer fund is going to be, has a slightly larger deficit than what I was projecting three months ago, because of higher-than-expected costs for the Talman's Drive sewer replacement line. Refuse fund is slightly worse, but really not noteworthy. All total in the general fund right now, we have a surplus of $917,000, and a positive year-to-date budget variance of $425,000. Just very quickly, accounts receivable are going in the right direction, which is down. Interest is going in the right direction, which is up. I think on the bond funds, I'm starting to get concerned that we'll have some overages on the sewer fund side for the West Goshen improvements. Good news with all these grants, we're starting to have some major unallocated fund balances for, on the general fund side, that we can talk, as we move forward in the budget season, and maybe next year, about how to use those. The next meeting, November 13th, I will present the proposed budget for 2019.
John, do you have a quarter report, a third quarter report right here, or?
Yes.
It's on the list. Whoops. Well, if you three are interested, and those out in the world are interested in looking at the third quarter report, John has the extensive third quarter report on the website, if those are interested. Takes a little while, but it's fairly easy to read, and it does tell you exactly where we are at the end of the third quarter. I guess they were just here for the Sunoco.
Are you still doing the PUC and PHMSA public hearing?
Pardon me?
Are you still doing, are you still going to do the PUC and PHMSA public hearing?
We didn't get to it yet. We'll get there sooner or later here.
Okay.
We're working on it. John's done it. We've got a few minutes for October 2nd, and we've got a few treasury reports for October 11th. Is there, has anybody have any comments on the minutes with respect to October 2nd?
I move that we approve, I move that we approve the minutes of October 2nd as per seven.
Through second?
Second, I'll second.
Anybody have any, anybody have any changes on that? Because I don't. Does anybody?
I think Janet took care of anything.
Well-
Didn't have any.
I know you didn't, I'm just asking the others. If I see none, there's a question, all those in favor of motion?
Aye.
Treasurers, for Carmen, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if anybody has a question on any of the bills, let's bring it up now.
Okay, very motion.
My motion, Mr. Chairman, pending any questions from board members, I would ask that we approve Chris Boylan's proposed payment of bills letter dated October 11th, and graciously accept the receipts and pay the pending bills once we've done it on them.
Through second?
Second.
How much are questions from the board, the audience, all those in favor of motion?
Aye.
Okay, for those out in the world and here, I am skipping old business for the moment. I'm going right down to new business, because I know there's at least one board member that's going to leave at like 9:30 if we get that for. So we'll deal with item 12A, which is, which is, Eric, where are you going?
Let's go. I'll see you later.
Come on, come on. Mike, you love this subject, we're going to go into chickens.
Right, right off the bat, I am not in favor of the ordinance the way it's written at this point in time.
What are you in favor of?
I am not in favor, this is an ordinance, the amendments associated with this keeping of animals and focused on chickens for domestic household use is for one household, and there is no reason to have a variance of the number of chickens whether you have 200 acres or one acre, when the intent and objective is to have chickens for the household. If you have 200 acres, why you need 20 chickens, I'll never know, because one family cannot consume the eggs from 20 chickens. one family cannot consume the eggs from twenty chickens. So I cannot support this in the current language, I submitted comments to the Planning Commission about that, I don't know whether they were aired or not, but in the present form, that's, that's my main objection.
The Commission, uh, I think acknowledges, received your comments, however, they felt it's appropriate time now was to incorporate the Planning Commission's comments, Canine Planning Commission's comments, get this to the board, and then collectively get all the board's comments before they make any, do any more revisions.
Okay, you heard my comments, it should be maximum amount of chickens for every size property here.
Do you have a number, or?
Five.
Five?
Well, let me ask you a question. I am not into chickens, so I have no idea what a family of four requires in eggs, and how many eggs it's, how many chickens are necessary to make those eggs for a family of four. Does anybody have any idea what that information is? Because that's critical to this discussion.
Then why do we come up with five?
I have the opinion that this ordinance says that this is not for commercial use, it's for occasional, if somebody makes, gets too many eggs and they give them away. I'm with, I'm with Mike on this. If that's the goal here, you only need so many chickens. And as far as I'm concerned, you only need so many chickens than it is for a family of four to have enough eggs to, you know, for their use. I, whatever the family of four used chickens would amount to, that's, that's the number that I think should apply to all, to all, 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 uh.
So, is it?
So, but I don't know what it is, I don't know what that number is.
Well, I would assume we could find that out, is that a consensus of the board?
I, I agree, I heard most of Michael's statement, I did have to temporarily leave the room, but I agree with Michael that it's.
So we need some, we need the number of chickens that, uh, uh, is, the number has to be, I guess, reasonable for, for a family of four to use.
Correct.
So we can, we'll get that.
And that applies across all, all.
And then, and then, if you have one acre, you can have it, normally if you have four acres, you can have it.
Correct.
Yeah, four acres, that's right.
Well, if it's four acres, it's a four, a four, and we're out of the game.
Oh, yes, okay.
But, right now we're told in resident, okay.
Yeah.
One acre up will have the same amount of.
And the rest of the regulations look, look pretty good to me as far as the.
I'm gonna bump one up.
Yeah. Is that, anybody else, any other comments?
The idea's in favor of, uh, eliminating the twenty, twenty maximum, and just says you have more than two acres, you can have, and maximum, um, for that, for the same reason.
But then, you.
I like the rest of the ordinance, the way it's worded.
But then, you're, are you, are you, you're suggesting that to be two, that it's one for one size lot? I think Michael was saying there's, the intention is, as for the family, the fact that you have two acres is irrelevant, it, it, it's more based on how many eggs the, the family can consume.
It doesn't matter how many acres you have.
Yeah.
A family of four is gonna eat two dozen eggs a week, I'm just throwing something out there. Now, how many chickens do you get four dozen a week, or two dozen a week?
Whatever you mean.
Realizing that the chickens don't lay all year, there's, there's parts of the year, you only get chicken eggs seven months, I think?
That's where we have supermarket.
That's the amount of chickens to feed a family of four. Two dozen a week, or whatever it is.
And it's supposed to be incidental, so if you, if you, you're in a, a dormant period, thank goodness for wagmans, you know, and, and the farmer's market, so.
You just don't eat eggs for.
You don't eat eggs, I mean.
There's, there's three, Janet, where are you?
Wait a minute, someone.
We have a question.
David, wait a minute, David, David, David's speaking.
My, my recommendation is on page three, item five, A, B, and C, we delete C and change B to a maximum of ten chickens may be kept on a lot that is, has a lot area equal to or greater than two acres.
So you're allowing, you're allowing more chickens than a, than a family could eat because you're, you're, they have more acreage, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I disagree that the family size, I think we have more acreage, we have capacity, just like you do for anything else.
Yeah, but you have capacity, it turns into a commercial operation.
I don't know.
But you, I'm sorry, you, you were favored deleting C.
Delete C and then let, and less than five acres from me, so it's.
No, just, and delete less than five acres, yeah.
I'm a, I'm a family of four from one acre up, me, that's where I am.
I'm.
Wait.
I'm, I'm with, I'm with you, Marty, on that.
I'm, I'm.
Can we talk about seven?
I agree that it should, if it, if this is, um, a residential use, it should not be enough chickens to make it commercially profitable.
Where are you going?
Well, the only problem I have, even in the borough, is if, if, and here's the key, a responsible person that has chickens can do it on a smaller lot, a less amount of chickens, but I think we're missing the intent of the question that came to us a year ago, the question to us that ended up at the Planning Commission and so forth was, what about smaller lots having chi, or smaller homes having chickens? So we went through all of our routine, and we see this, but we still left out, or, or are we not going to allow?
It was, it was intentional. When the Planning Commission did its discussions and they were looking at smaller lots, they were looking at significantly smaller lots, and they decided against it. So the reason it's up to an acre is because that was the decision that they made.
And, and, and the logic was, if we went with smaller lots and it didn't work out, and we amended Nord's back, um, then we would have lots that would have.
Oh, with grandfather, not farming.
But, but the thing was, if we went this way, and it worked, so to speak, then you could consider reducing the lots. So it was easier to, to, from a practical point of view.
So we're opening the door for acre.
Right, and then, and then if it works, then we, then we can consider.
Then maybe we'll go ahead. I just needed to make sure the intent didn't change from the original.
I think, I think the idea here is to acre up and a family of, the eggs it could reduce for a family of four, whatever number of chickens you need to do for a family of four. That's what I think the motion is. Except for David's, David's part, which is more different. But the other, it seems like all the way, the rest of the four are at one acre up, and whatever number of chickens required to provide enough eggs for a family of four. I believe that's what the motion is. Am I correct?
I'm satisfied that we didn't make a motion, there was open comment.
Are you making a motion to that, Ben?
No.
You're not?
No, but I support what you're saying.
I, all right, listen, so we can get more discussion, Janet keeps hitting me on this, so we can continue a discussion, I will make a motion that we approve, uh, the ordinance to allow to have chickens in East Ocean, changing a, um, on page three, A, B, and C, basically are gonna be mute, it's going to be how many, how many eggs can be supplied by how many chickens for a family of four, regardless of acreage.
I, I think we're being premature. If we want to find out how many chickens are, do certain number of eggs, I think we should.
The motion is to direct staff to research how many.
I, I think that's, that makes more sense.
Let me read something here, uh, whatever, all the truth is on Google, we know that. Good-laying hens will lay about five eggs each a week, average out over a year. So if you have five good-laying hens that lay five eggs each week.
What's that eggs a week?
Twenty-five eggs.
Uh, that would be twenty-five eggs a week, that would meet your needs, you need four square feet of coop space for hens, so that means that for five hens, you need a twenty-square-foot coop. Sounds to me like five is a number that will provide you so much cholesterol, I have no idea why you'd wanna eat that many.
Good cholesterol.
So, that's my editorial and Google's truth.
Well, then we get more information, or do we let it go the way it is?
I would, I would. I would request more information.
What do you need?
And, just to figure, you know, to figure out how many, what is a reasonable number? You know, is it five? I don't know if it's five.
Six, is it seven, is it four? Okay, I don't know.
And, and then, we'll just table it and bring it back next month.
So, so, then no motion?
So, just, the, 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 If there's, I think, twenty or, twenty or more come back with a yes, we will do it. If not, we won't do it. So that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we install temporary speed bumps at the locations shown on the backside of the October tenth letter if we receive positive responses from twenty of the impacted residents.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Tom, are there questions for the board, from the audience? We're starting to move pretty fast, Julia. We're going to get to this. Okay, stuck in late, she's watching us over the damn...
Marty.
Hold on.
All those in favor of the motion?
The diagram also serves bumps on Tremont Drive.
Yeah, Tremont and, uh, Brookmont and Tremont. Tremont, both of them are motion. I want to thank Ricky for that.
Brookmont is a name in development, that's why we use it. Yeah, that's...
I can, I can add Tremont as a friendly amendment if you wish. But it is, it is Brookmont.
That's shown on the map as well.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Good. That takes care of that. We're now up to item twelve D, which is a variance time limit coordinates. I asked Ricky, I thought, I thought, I thought the two sections were the same.
There are two separate, two separate sections to code. And again, Mark Gordon noted he came to light with the Lincolnstein variance application. So we have sent it to Canada and get to our planning commission. And we should have some time in, we'll schedule it probably in, in late November.
All right, so we don't have any action on it.
All right.
I think it's a good idea.
Next?
So, the next is the, consider the authorization of an application, like Penn Dot Multi-Modal Transportation Fund grant application for section B of the Daley Blake Trail. That's the one, it's the big request. And we only have to, we don't have to do the whole thing all over again. All we have to do is say we're ready to authorize it.
Correct. They basically file a letter and if you need to change your cost, update it. But you basically just reactivate your...
There's a motion here. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize application for the Penn Dot Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant Program in the amount of one million eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Thousand. One million...
One hundred eighty, eight hundred sixty-six thousand, didn't I say that? I'm sorry. And prove matching funds in the amount of eight hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred.
Where do those matching funds come from? Just out of curiosity?
I don't know. That's my question. Where do the matching funds come from?
More budget.
More budget, well fine.
It's the same thing that's in there before, John.
Yeah.
We haven't changed anything, we're just resubmitting.
Second.
Is it, all right, Sam, we got a second. Isn't this the same one we applied for before that we have the money for?
Yeah, but we don't have any money allocated for matching funds.
Well, have the grant application.
And we can make money if we can allocate it from the general fund. But I would know what's right in the, in the, in the letter, where that money's coming from.
It's the same letter we sent before. We gotta take money from somewhere.
Okay.
But safe to assume if they're going to give us a million eight, we should be able to calculate our debt.
Okay. Good, good.
I mean, are we, are we okay? Isn't this the same as before?
Yeah. Aye.
All right, was there a second?
Yes.
All those, all, hey, Congress, are there questions for the board?
Aye.
From the audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, next item is a couple of escrow releases.
We have the, the grant agreement for the first, we see you authorize you to, to sign the grant agreement for the, this is two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant.
I skipped one of those, okay. Somebody make a motion to that effect, I'm sure I'm going to sign it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the chairman sign the Greenways Trails Recreation Program Commitment Letter for two hundred fifty thousand.
Is there a second?
One second.
Congress, are there questions for the board, from the audience? That was the two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah.
Just so we're keeping our grants. Okay, now we're doing the, now we're doing the escrow releases. Wait till that, wait till that. Well, let's vote.
Aye.
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 Now we can do G, right? I really wanted to get to G. G can do the same thing. If you're right, somebody going to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do an escrow release number one for sixteen, sixty-two East Boot Road. The engineer and our staff recommend eight thousand ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents for site preparation, erosion, and earthwork. Balance of the release is seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-four. As part of my motion, escrow release number one, sixteen sixty-four East Boot Road, the developer requested a release of twelve thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Our engineer and staff recommend release of seven thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The releases for site prep, erosion control, earthwork, balance of the release will be seventy-seven thousand fifty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Congress, are there questions from the board, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The next one is a request from the Malvern Library.
You've already, you've already approved that with the, approving the treasures of work.
Yep, yeah, well, I just... That's... I'm sixty. Melissa, oh, this is... They approved her, so...
Me too.
It's a tough man ever in this position, I tell you. The next, the next is considering request is, the PUC and FIMSA have a public hearing here in San Antonio Pipeline. Bernadette, or, Melissa DeBernardino is in the back shuffling in and here just a little late for a meeting, but that's okay. But you can come up here and you can tell everybody what a wonderful job you did in writing this. And I assume that you wrote that epistle.
I'd like to make a motion that we request the SPC to have this public hearing. I'll just make the motion.
No, well, wait a minute, Ricky has...
Just suggest we make a motion.
Why don't we let Melissa at least talk about what the hell she's been doing? And Ricky has a suggestion for us to make, and I'd like to have Ricky make that suggestion. So Melissa, why don't you come up here and within two, two minutes tell us what that gets going on? We all have a public, we all have a copy of here.
Well, I think everybody in the room read the, I think the same, everybody in the room read the same letter. But I just...
That's okay.
Get a little bit closer to the microphone. And you have to give your name and address because we're live streaming.
Oh, Melissa DeBernardino, sixteen oh two originally. I would like a public comment, period. Like the DEP has every time that there's been a change in their plans. There's been so many issues to begin with, with this project, and now so many new ones between the twelve inch line being used. I feel like for years now, we've been having the PUC and FIMSA both going against aging infrastructure and how we need new, but somehow now we're being stuck with two eight-year-old pipes. It's just been disaster after disaster with the company. And I think that before they make a decision, you know, in a closed-door meeting, they should hear from the people who, A, have been mainly inspecting the pipes and the construction and timing all these issues.
I appreciate your passion. Your passion is, is most amazing on a, on a complaint that you're, you're very well... I didn't realize you're fencing yourself as a lawyer, but you're doing a really good job. It is, it is almost impossible from my experience for a township to ask for something like you're asking. However, Ricky does have a suggestion, and our lieutenant back there will be more than happy to realize what this is going to involve, and she will be prepared for what's going to be. Ricky, will you go ahead and make your suggestion?
Well, the fall would be is ask Representative Comida and Senator Killian to request the PUC that they...
Great idea.
It has to come from a higher, higher, higher pay grade than us.
And I would anticipate that they may, this may be something where both sides, Democrats and Republicans, because I'm sure Ian Denman would like to see it, and Mr. Rafferty, and I'm sure somebody else some legislators on both sides of the aisle would probably join in his request.
It's, it's very clear from what's been happening that...
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I must give Carolyn, Carolyn, Carolyn Comida a lot of credit because she seems to be able to, be able to get these folks down here. Whether or not they come down for a pure public discussion, I, I'm not sure. However, if we're going to get them down here, it's going to be up to Carolyn and the senator to ask that, for that to happen. Who, anybody that wants to come, that they're able to do that, is going to come. But we've got to make it very clear that it's not, it's not a meeting to bash them, it's a meeting to gain information. Because if, if it turns into a, what the hell's the matter with you kind of a thing, I, I personally would call a meeting over.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we request staff to write a letter to Representative Comida and Representative Killian to request that they make a request to FIMSA and the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to convene a public meeting to answer residents' questions.
I'll second that.
I just have one que, I have one question on the motion. Was that a meeting or meetings as needed with changes? I mean, because I think you said not one meeting, but could be a couple when things change or...
That was what Cumberland County Commissioners were requesting from them. I mean, yes, I do think that the whole public awareness aspect would be, but I want to hear.
So my question to you, David, is your motion basically just says, let's get Carolyn and, and others to get a meeting. Should we, should we possibly change it to say a meeting and/or additional meetings if needed due to changes? I don't know.
Well, there's also an operative word here. We're talking about a meeting or a hearing. If it's a meeting, it's public information exchange. If it's a hearing, then we've got a more formalized process. I'm not sure we're going to get that. But I just want to make sure you understand the distinction between a meeting and a hearing. Julie, you, you guys certainly understand the difference?
I think you want a meeting. But my experience is you want a meeting, and you want the senators to ask the meeting on behalf of the residents of East Ocean. If others want to come, that's fine, but I have to tell you, if this was to be pulled off, you are going to have the whole room at, you're getting filled.
Good.
I would suspect just the residents of East Ocean. So if then other people want to ask for that to happen in their own jurisdictions, that's fine. But we're asking on behalf of our residents, so we're in the situation anyway. So if you don't mind, I think that's the way to go about doing this.
Just to be clear, too, I mean, I, the meeting is great, too, and I wouldn't want it to be a bashing per se. I just, I do want these people to hear legitimate, like credible concerns.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Before they make the decision.
Yeah, but I don't want somebody standing up there and just saying, you know, you're rotten, you're rotten to core kind of thing.
Right, no, I can do that.
But I think, I think your success rate is going to be... If they write a letter effectively like, like they can do, and I'm sure that Julia would probably write the letter for, for Carolyn, if they do an effective job writing the letter, I think there's a reasonable chance of getting them to come here. I, however, it would be the first one of its kind, I must say, so we would be planting some ground. But it may be a good way of following up the last couple of meetings that Carolyn has had. The one that you, you prompted and the one that was just over the representatives from Sunoco and the PUC and Cato. It might be a worthwhile idea to do that.
The reason I recommended a meeting rather than a hearing is that my last experience with a hearing is that the PUC showed up, sat on the dice, refused to make comments, wouldn't make any, wouldn't answer any questions. And I'd, I'd rather it be interactive if possible, so that's...
Good, okay. That's why I say meeting is the operative word.
It's possible out of that, that, let's just say we get a positive response, they may ask us to supply information or questions that they might either be addressed or that they want to have answered, and we might, we might have to formulate some questions so that people get some idea. I wouldn't be surprised if that happens, but if it does, fine, we'll do that.
We'll have questions. We'll, we'll have questions.
I just called a question, guys. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Bernard.
Thank you very much.
I want to call you Bernard.
Bernard DeRita.
Thank you, DeRita. Melissa's across the street. There is, there is one, any other matter, folks, and that has to do with...
We have a escrow request for the Sunny Ridge Farms, which is off Colonial Lane. Marx looked at it, Nace looked at it, and we can close out, it was a maintenance, that's why we can close it out. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of staff to approve that escrow.
Second.
Congress, are there questions for anybody? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
We'll skip the layers of reports for tonight because it's getting late.
We can, let's table, let's table the fire marshal report.
Well, we haven't got there yet.
Well, when we get there.
When we get there, there's another...
Are we going to table the logo discussion?
No, no, that's, we're going back to it right now. We're going back to the logo.
Okay, Mark, I got six, same kind.
John, why don't we let John tell us what he found, and we'll go from there.
We got technical difficulties, give me one second. The co-fil, the co-fil. Okay, it should be going. Okay, so, so, yeah, it should be going. So, as you know, we contracted with Finch Brands, a group that consisted of myself, Rick, Mark Gordon, Jason, Janet, and four members of the Futures Committee met with Finch on several occasions. We brainstormed ideas. I've been through that several times. You guys have seen the, you know, the kind of proposed designs. We then took it out, asked folks both in constant contact, the newsletter as well as in person at the food truck school for feedback on their preferred designs. Trying to find my memo here, here we go. We got a lot of responses, guys. We got a total of two hundred and fifty-seven responses. The status quo, the existing two logos were the, the favorite, were the preferred response. Thirty-two percent of respondents said they prefer the status quo. They liked the historical nature of the blacksmith shop. It was classic. No other municipalities have a blacksmith shop, and we should highlight that. Among the new options, I believe it was the maple tree. Option E was the, was, was the second. And the two sycamore trees that were very similar collectively actually had more votes than the maple tree. You know, so, you know, there was a lot of just mixed response. There was, I, I included a design, two designs were provided by residents. The first series of ones didn't come out that great with the, with the copies, as well as Mr. Mark Sedenko, Semenko, excuse me. He actually went down, he was so disappointed with Finch's designs, and he went down to the blacksmith shop and very professionally drafted this, this design. In the next section, this is the last page of the memo, is just me taking the design overlay with some sort of classic-looking lettering. So, you know, as I see it, there's sort of, I feel like this has been, you know, discussed a lot within the township. As I see it, there's sort of really five, I say four in the memo, but really five options for the board to consider. First one would be to maintain the existing logo. Obviously, that's the simplest thing to do. The next would be to select one of the new design options and, and the color schemes. As I said, that first color scheme, that lighter lime-ish green was the most popular. Select one of those new design options and color schemes as the new township logo. Select, a third option would be to select one of those new designs and color schemes, but then go back and ask Finch to tweak it. I've spoken to Finch, and there's still, they still have some flexibility on the contract to, you know, add a flagpole here or a little kid flying a kite there, so long as the basic idea stays the same. Then we could consider, you know, the two residents options, particularly Mr. Semenko's option, which is, I think, very, you know, a lot of energy and professionalism and thought went into that. The one concern I have with that, Mr. Semenko's option, is I don't know that it would be scalable. So if you expanded it, actually, I mean, if you shrunk it, it would probably show up okay. But if you expanded it beyond that, I don't know how great the resolution would be. And finally, you know, if we go back to when we first brought this to the board and with the RFP, Navitas that did West Whiteland's design, they did it, they quoted us a price of twenty-five hundred dollars. At this point, it's probably not a huge, you know, a huge stretch to, to ask Navitas to go and take a stab at it. I think if we were to do that, we should really focus on the blacksmith shop. I mean, my final comment about this was, you know, it's a challenging exercise. There are a lot of stakeholders at the table. You know, I, I, I don't disagree with a lot of comments that the blacksmith shop is beautiful, iconic, and historically significant landmark in East Ocean. And there's a lot to be said for keeping it as our, as our township logo. But I, with that said, I completely defer to the, to the, to the board.
John, I, I don't, I mean, I guess if you want to...
Wait for my mic.
I guess if you want to bring the, the other company on, I have to give you my opinion. Even if it's tweaked a little bit, I have given it a lot of thought and looked at it as driving around. I like the original. I really, really think that it is a touch of East Ocean. The only other thing that you, if you could do it, if we're getting in, into a new logo, is if you had our existing blacksmith shop and were able to add something...
Preserve, serve, protect.
I, I will steal Marty's comment that he's about to make. If you look on the next item on the agenda, which is about the fire inspection thing, Marty pointed out that with the existing logo, there's, there's like a pamphlet that Mark Gordon created just kind of, you know, just on his laptop, that has the existing green blacksmith shop logo. And it just says preserving the past, serving the present, protecting the future.
That's exactly from the fire, yep.
I think that's a beautiful logo if we're going to pick a logo.
So what I'm talking about, guys, is this.
Yeah, over on the fire inspection thing, yep.
You agree with that?
I think it's wonderful.
Fit it in, I think it's fine.
Talking about, you know what I'm talking about?
This one?
Oh, you got to figure it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, my comment is that the old logo is old, old and tired. And we went into this project for a reason. And frankly, I'm not favoring the old logo. I just want to go on record as saying that.
What, what's your preference?
Preference is, is E.
The single tree?
That's just my opinion.
And I can go with that. I, my, my umbrella opinion is that we could have done just fine in-house. And I think that we did not get the value out of this fancy-dancy company we spent a lot of dollars on. That's, that's my biggest disappointment, irrespective of what the logo looks like.
I agree, but aren't you, aren't you changing, and this may be because I'm, I'm a senior citizen now that, that's been in this township for a long time, but in my opinion, changing from a, from a historical piece of property to a, not that I'm cheapening a tree, I think it's a change in culture, and I think it's an insult, and I don't mean that nasty, but I think it's an insult to our past history of East Ocean Township. We were definitely a player now, the way we are proactive throughout the county and the state. And it looks like East Ocean was a player all the way back when they, when they broke off from West Ocean. So I, I don't see why you can't take what you, what you call tired, and I agree, it's a little bit old. But if we dress it up a little bit with our, with our three, with our three tremendous pieces here, like, like the fire report, that rejuvenates it. Just my opinion.
Taking your player analogy a little bit further, you know, let's look at professional sports, football, baseball. You know, their logos evolve over time, but, you know, we still have the heritage of the, of the teams. And I just think it's an old, tired logo, and we're, we're trying to go forward with a new image and a new way of thinking. We're developing our trail, we're trying to develop Coach and Phil. And I just think that re-imaging our logo is a, is a good idea.
And that, that's why, and David, that's why I'm disappointed that this storied company couldn't give us something more than what we already had, and then they give us one with a tree. I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed.
I just, just, just want to say, just, you know, it's easy to... I want to make two comments. First of all, change is hard on, on everybody, and it takes a long time for a logo to sink in. That's kind of something everybody says, you know, at first, nobody really got Nike swoosh or, you know, those iconic logos. But over time, it started to make sense, so change is hard. The second thing is, I mean, to, to blame one person for, you know, perceived disappointment with the designs is, is probably unfair. It really was a group effort, you know, and, you know, groups can, whether it's group think or whether it's, you know... And a process like that is a learning experience for everybody, and it's hard to, you know, hit the bullseye every time.
Let me, let me make two comments. One, I was at the Futures Committee last night. I don't, I don't know if they sensed what was going to happen or whatever. They asked that the thing be referred back to them, knowing that, knowing what John's thing is. John's summary, if you go by number one, it was the old logo. I think the old logo with the, with that signature up here puts it all together myself. Now, as far as the tree's concerned, I, I couldn't understand the tree in the first place, I must admit that. But however, I must have told you the other night, on one of the, on one of the programs, there was the tree, and it was, it was part of an advertisement for one of the cancer centers in Philadelphia. And I said, son of a bitch, that's our tree. I said, that's our tree. I said, wait a minute. And then I find out that this tree's been used over a lot of, so it's not a new tree.
That's why we had the two other trees, that, other than the, the maple. And we had people go into the park and choose actual trees to, to put in there.
Yeah, and strictly speaking, Marty, all of those trees there are original, they are based, based on photographs that Mark Gordon and I took, so...
There was comments that came in from people about what the trees did or didn't do and all that kind of stuff. But I'm just, I'm not suggesting what we do. I'm not a tree guy, so the trees do nothing for me whatsoever. I'm, I'm only on one logo, and if we are all over the place, we'll send it back to them and let them come forward again. But remember, you only had less than five tenths of a percent of the people that responded, and that's not a great sample. And of that group, the number one was the existing logo. Now, I agree with David to the point where I think it's a little tired, but if you, if you add in these, these three, these three things like it, it's, it's a pretty, pretty, pretty compelling to me. Now, that's just me.
Okay.
But we're all over the place, so we can send it back.
I, I am perfectly happy to send it back, but I would argue against adding anything to the current logo because the whole idea is to make it simple so that when you put it on a banner, it is easily recognizable. And if you get things to be more complicated, it's more difficult to make a statement.
And from a graphics perspective, we have the, you know, our current logo was very horizontal, right? So when you try to put those flag banners up on the street that a lot of municipalities do to promote their...
They're vertical.
They're, they're vertical, and if you scale that thing down, it's going to be this big on a, you know, on a vertical flag. The tree goes both ways, and is probably more scalable and graphically pleasing than a horizontal design.
All right, so at this point, we're going to send it back? Is that the consensus?
And, but it's, send it back, and for what?
For what?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay, so then, then there's no sense in sending it back?
Well, unless we're prepared to make a vote now.
The, the, the bottom line is, based on my conversation with Finch a week ago, they're not prepared to do another suit-to-nuts design. They'll, they'll tweak something at margins, you know, that fonts or things like that. But as far as, you're saying, okay, start a...
as far as saying, okay, start again from scratch, that's not, that's not, that's, the ship has left the dock there.
All right, I'm going to. How much did we pay Finch?
Twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, Michael, I am going to go out on a, I'm going to go out on a line big time here. Since we have, since we have a split in what we're looking at, and I happen to agree with Marty, here's what I'm going to propose. I want to see the blacksmith shop with the three items that we tried to do with East Goshen. David brought up the fact that he likes the trees and so forth. We can go, I'm going to go to a local person, actually, I get surgery tomorrow, but maybe Friday or something, I'm going to call a professional sign company that I'm fairly friendly with and see if he will do something on his computer. He's got this really fancy thing that does all sorts of 3D advertising and stuff, and see if he'll do me a favor or do something, you know, very cheaply, to give us a couple of options that we can look at by itself. I'm not going back to this company, you know? So with the board's permission, authorize me to spend a hundred dollars if he wants a hundred bucks for his time. Let me see what he can do. I think he can use his, this program if we, and I'll take John with me. In fact, John will have to drive me because I can't drive, but we could go there and show him exactly what we want and have him try to do something digitally, electronically, I don't know, just an offer. Happy to act as super.
The question is, what do we want? If you go to that, that's fine. Janet and David appear to be in favor of a tree. Michael and I, I think Carmen, we're not in favor of a tree.
And I don't know what I want, I just.
Don't you don't? Yeah, you.
We're in no man's land. We're literally in no man's land right now.
No, but I don't.
If you let it rest.
Let's table it, let me see what he can do, and if we have to, we'll put it in the darn newsletter and see if we can get people to come to respond back or constant contact.
We already did that.
I know, but let me go to this.
We've done too much interfacing with this. I mean, honestly, guys, unless somebody's going to make a motion to the contrary, I say we stay with the existing logo for now, and, you know, if this isn't working, we resurrect this in six months or 12 months or something like that.
What is the timeframe, John, that we need to have this sooner than?
Well, I mean, kind of from a budget standpoint, one of the things that I'll talk about in the budget is that we're going to get order signs, two signs at the park, six signs, you know, welcoming East Goshen, those things, in 2019, and, you know, those would ideally have the new logo. So, you know, I think we want to have those in place presumably sometime in 2019, so we have some time to think about it. Maybe it's not so urgent, we make a decision now. I don't know, Rick, do you have any thoughts on that?
Why don't we put it back out? We've narrowed it down. We got E and F to the right, which is that version over there, with or without the words already, and so we've narrowed it down, we want your feedback on these final two. Put it back out.
I don't agree with, I don't agree with you.
You don't agree with what?
E.
Eight? What do you like, D?
Yeah.
Were you like six?
C or D, either one, but I think D looks too much like what everybody else in the world has.
I actually liked C, but I was voting with E because of the weighted response from the public, you know, which was the highest weighted, it was either for second or third for the most people, but, and I didn't want to impose my aesthetic opinion on them.
I'm okay with C.
Yeah, you know, if you ask me personally.
It's around three to two. I think you live the thing less than five. Am I still going to see if my buddy will put some stuff together? So people can say it?
We can't get him sure.
In Finch's defense, what they do is.
John, we're going to have to take John's suggestion, it's two, two to one, so let it rest, let it sit for a while, then we'll do something else if we want to do it. I don't think there's this complete sense of urgency right at the moment. This is not, this is not working real well, so we're wasting our time.
Michael wants to get going, we have one more thing to go here, and then Michael can go.
At John.
The township.
Yeah, thank you.
The township fire thing.
Okay, if I could start, for the fire prevention program, because I know it's getting late, I think it needs some refinement. There, I think I sent an email out, I don't know if everybody got it.
Yes.
I said, "I don't believe this is ready for approval right now," and sort of my rationale real quick, so we can get going. Number one, it's a major, major step and a major, major expense for nothing to what we want. There may be something interim that we can do that, to build up to this, that other townships do, but I do not have the information. I'm going to ask that we table it, and hopefully I can get some information between myself and Mark Miller for next month. Mark and I have been talking fairly regularly on this. Did a good job, and it looks good, but I, you know, there are some tweaks that maybe we can do.
And before we get it again, there are a lot of typos.
I don't do typos. Okay, well, that's.
I agree, yeah, so, but that's final refinement.
Right.
So he didn't even run spell check, probably?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe we can get fixed.
So this is tabled, what you want to do is table this.
Let me just make sure I understand what the marching orders are. So you're going to speak with Mark Miller?
No, Mark and I have been speaking. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask to table it for a month, until Mark Miller and I can get some information to read, to add to this.
Because it's in the budget for 2019, and that would be presented on the 13th.
Right.
I mean, that's not a problem per se, but is it Mark Miller you're talking about?
I am talking about Mark Miller.
Oh, okay.
Not Mark Warding, Mark Miller. He, there are some, there are a couple of townships, let me really quick explain. There are a couple of townships, I think Uklind is one, but this is where my information is not solid. What they have is they have public works people, like we do that, are firemen. In our case, we have a fire chief. All of them are certified. I believe two of them have fire marshal force, if not, they're taking it or whatever. What the townships do is they will, in the winter time, when things slow down for public works and stuff, they'll take a code officer with one of the public works guys has, they have certifications, and they'll blast through them together when public works sort of has the time. And then what that keeps us from having a full-time fire marshal is basically what it does. But I don't have any other information right now.
He thinks, Carmen basically thinks there's, in the winter time, the folks have some spare time that they might be able to utilize in this capacity.
I'd be nice if you could find that, that'd be a great thing. Because I, but then the public works can do it, because our code guys don't have time to do it.
Right.
So therefore, it would have to be public works to now take on this responsibility.
It's an idea, I don't have.
What was one sort of just general comment, we were tossing this around, is this is a challenging job from a PR, in lack of a better word, I mean, it's a job that's going to not necessarily make friends within.
They're not going to be happy with it.
Yeah, and so, I mean, in lack of a better words, carefully, but the temperament that a kind of a codes-type officer brings to a position like this might be different than the temperament that, you know, public works, and that sounds, you know, stereotyping, but there's a right fit, so I would just bear that in mind as you move forward.
I don't disagree at all, and maybe what I'm talking up is an error, but this is a really, really important, major change that we have to get ready the first time, because you can't peddle, you can't backpedal.
I agree. That's a really good point.
Well, I mean, the question to me, what I'm hearing is, there's a notion upon investigation that there may be some time in the winter for public service works to assume this responsibility. Clearly, the bulk of the year when they're doing stuff outside, they can't do it. Now, whether or not it turns out to be true or not, it remains to be seen. Now, that said, if you're going to undertake this thing, it seems to me that that's okay if they can help along the way in the winter time, if there's things that they, time that they have to do that, but you're going to have to be awful careful here, because when you inspect, chances are you're going to find something the matter.
Found a job.
And that person is going to have to be very user-friendly and have a clear understanding that why there's a job to do, they're not trying to punish these people, but they're trying to maintain the fact that we care and we want them to be safe, and what conformance is about safety, and we are not here to be a tiller-hun. However, if you're one of these people and you've got to spend mega bucks to correct something, you're going to think that we went a step too far.
Yep.
And the question becomes is, we're in. Does the benefit of safety outweigh the fact that you're liable to get a lot of people upset with you over, because they think they're doing the right thing, and you're coming along telling them, "Well, wait a minute, you didn't play any gate, the rules are," so I don't know what the answer is.
Marty, if I could, if I could, every time I'm called to a particular place for a fire or alarm problem, fire company calls me, I go in, and wherever I go in, I find three or two violations, because what they do is management will say, "Marty, I want you to build a wall today," in the whatever. So I contact codes, I tell whatever supervisor's there, "Look, we got a couple problems here. Did you get a permit for this? Did you check it out?" I email Vinnie, okay, and Vince typically is my follow-up to my dispatches, and then Vince goes in, or Gary, whoever has time, and they'll say, "Look, why didn't you get permit on this?" So it's reactive. They've already done the work, and they're so used to doing that, these large corporations with that type of service, like a nursing home or whatever, they could get a management change in a minute that they're going to throw a wall up, and you just can't do that when you're talking about firewalls and ventilation and stuff like that. And I've already warned them, and they go in and they end up, I guess, paying or whatever they do. What I'm saying is, this might be the remedy, but I just would like a month to explore.
I need to, how big a problem do we have? Now, not, I'm not denying that, let me say, I suspect if you went into any property, house or a commercial building, you're going to find something, a book. Now, the question is, have we had, has that fact in fact caused us a problem? Have we had a lot of fires or disasters or whatever you want to call them, enough to make this thing go into play? Because this is a hell of a lot of work, and I can see where we're going to, people are happy, they ain't going to be too happy with this, I don't think.
This was precipitated by the Barclay Farm in Westchester.
That's correct.
Two gorgeous buildings we have in East Goshen Township are Wellington and Birmingham. Two gorgeous buildings in East Goshen Township are made of wood.
Tender boxes.
Wood. And what this, now, would it have caught Westchester or not? I don't know, but if Westchester had such a program and somebody had inspected that, perhaps they would have discovered there was issue with the system.
Okay, now.
So you're right, and, but we, again, we have about 108, we have over 100 commercial properties, and now we inspect the units during resales.
Resales.
So when apartment complexes change its hands, we go out and inspect its stair towers and make sure all that stuff is working, but in between them, we don't inspect them, but we inspect the units on a regular basis. But I would suggest, as Carmen suggested, we should table this to the next meeting, because at the same token, we'll have a recommendation on the radio booster ordinance, which, by the way, this is probably tasked with.
That's going to be.
That's the same issue. So I would suggest that this is the comment, and we'll push it back to in November.
Is there going to be a cost? What's the cost to this?
Basically, you're telling, you're going to need a person and a vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yes, but we'll table it.
So we're growing government, and I'd like to know what these costs are going to be in the long term.
It's in the.
Third page, Michael, you have salary and benefits as an estimate, 100,000 K annual, that's an estimate.
But it fixes purpose.
Vehicle, radio, equipment, 40 K, workstation, cell phone office, 4,000, estimated total 144,000, and then reoccurring after that, whatever the salary and benefits are.
We can read this between now and then. John, assuming we, John, assuming we come up with a decision, one of 13, is it okay with your budgeting?
Yeah, no, you know, it doesn't really matter, because, you know, the, what is it, 5% in any major category, and, you know, whatever the rule is.
And this is in the police side, which is.
Oh, no, it'd be in the codes side.
It's not a big number.
It's not a big number.
We'll plug it in, and if we take it out, we take it out.
Yes, yeah, I don't think that causes us to advertise.
Probably about the best, we should put it in. Okay, now, I know you guys are having a meeting over here, but we've got two things to go, there's two pieces of correspondence. John, we always argue about, or discuss this one, I should say, this $6,000 contribution to the nurses, the visiting nurses. They claim it was a thousand, or $6,000, it means their visit is $6,000 a visit to take care of these people. You can certainly make a case to why them and nobody else, but they've been here for, like, forever. I don't know, I would find it hard to believe you'd have to tell them, "Well, you know, see, for $6,000." I would suggest that we are going to, we do follow through on this, but that's just my opinion, which the board's.
Technically, you already approved of this.
Yeah, it's in the bills.
Okay, Ricky, you want to talk about Gavin Fleming, then we're out of here.
We submitted plans for the Hershey's Mill dam project, so based on what DEP tells us, we've got six months, and what do we get a review? I have one other suggestion for the agenda, and tonight, probably a perfect example, I've allocated, when I prepared the agenda, I allocated 30 minutes for public comment. I would suggest that I add a second public comment at the end of the agenda. When we come into the meeting, there's 30 minutes for public comment. If at 7:35, you stop that public comment and say, "Okay, we're going to now go to the agenda," run through the agenda, and then bring public comment back up again.
I would agree with that, because the public comment went on and on and on, and I really should be home by now.
Well, I'm not just.
No, I mean, seriously, I have.
We'll make it out of the agenda, and that way, we, we'll have a.
It's not a bad idea at all, not a bad idea at all.
That's right.
I make a motion. I agree, I, you know, yes, we talked something, and maybe it's me, but yes. But, however, I think that we have to be prepared. You have to be prepared to go to 10 o'clock, and that's it. Now, the earlier the better, but I don't think we can necessarily, you've got a big agenda, you're going to hit the 10 o'clock mark, but I don't think, I don't think it's productive after that. You should of that as a rule, I would think is you're fooling yourself. Now, tonight, we were close to the 9:30 until the early end here, so, I mean, there was a fair amount on there, and if these guys didn't show up about the pipeline, we would probably have done 9 o'clock.
Yep.
So, but what are you going to do? They deserve their fair treatment.
Not necessarily at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, because.
But you know what, let me just interrupt you one second, that's the purpose of this new committee we have. All of those questions could have been deferred to that committee, saying, "Please discuss with the committee."
There you go.
They're not finished yet. They're not meeting until November 12th.
But that's.
That's what it's for, so in the future, the committee will just give like a summary. You're right, Michael.
I don't know.
Oh, you don't make?
The next meeting, we'll have Chris Tadier Warriors here.
Oh, okay.
We're just going to recommend action. Remember, the purpose of the meeting.
Not to relay information.
Okay.
I'd like to move.
I know, I'm just throwing myself.
Find out.
Put an extra 15 minutes.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
It was already made, it was already made. Just vote on it, say all in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye what?